...whimsical. Mylar balloons can really perk up a party. They look innocent, but can be dangerous. The law requires that helium-filled metallic balloons be sold with weights. This silvery coating is a conductor. The balloons can float into power lines where they can arc, shorting transformers, knocking lines down, causing power outages, or spark a power surge that can destroy home electronics. Last year in the state, Mylar balloons caused more than 600 blackouts. The TV you save could be your own.
I do like that. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, April 16th, 2010. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And today, we are joined by members of the public, and we'd like to welcome everybody here in council chambers, as well as any folks that are in our remote locations in Van Nuys City Hall and in San Pedro. As I mentioned, we're here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. On Fridays, we traditionally have a number of presentations which mark notable people, events, days, and accomplishments here in Los Angeles, and so we'll be headed to those shortly. I want to thank those council members that are here on time. Council members Alarcon Cardenas, Weezer Karetz, Prokoryn Labange, Parks Perry, Rosenthal Wesson, and Zine. Mr. Smith is excused today, and Ms. Hahn is excused as well, and I believe Mr. Reyes is coming in later. We have agendas in the back for anybody who would like to see them. Those are made available to the public 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. They're also available online at our city's website at lacity.org. And for your convenience, you can watch your city government in action either live in person on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, through the Internet at lacity.org, where we have streaming webcasts of our council meetings and archived footage of our past ones, and through your telephone by calling the following telephone number: (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. And a service called Council Phone will allow you to listen in to any of our committee meetings or the full council hearings as well. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Paul Karetz, who I know was going to make an introduction. He may be coming around the horse chute as we speak. There's Mr. Karetz. I'd like to recognize him for both an introduction and the first presentation after that, if you'd like, Mr. Karetz.
Yes, I'd like to introduce a visitor from the state legislature, Assemblywoman Lori Saldana, who is here working with us on open carry legislation.
Good to have you here, Assemblywoman, and thank you for being in our chambers. And I'd like to recognize again a council member from the 5th District, Councilmember Karetz. He'll be followed by Councilmember Wesson, and then myself.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. This past Sunday, April 11th, marked Yom HaShoa, Holocaust Remembrance Day. It's a day of remembrance, a day of deep sadness, and a day where once again, we resolve never again to have millions of souls perish at the hands of hateful tyranny. Today at council, this Friday after Yom HaShoa, I thought it not only appropriate but crucial to bring in a group from my district that does so much for our city across the board, but in particular, has been nationally recognized for their pro bono legal services on behalf of Holocaust survivors. Betzedek Legal Services is the home to Holocaust Survivors Justice Network, a national coalition of attorneys and other legal professionals from more than 100 law firms and corporate legal departments, as well as 30 Jewish social service agencies organized to provide resources and dignities to survivors. The program was created by Betzedek Legal Services in partnership with the law firm of Manat Phelps &amp; Phillips, the first nationally coordinated pro bono effort, operating in 31 North American cities to provide support to reparation claim filing needs. Impressively, the program recently won the American Bar Association's highest pro bono award. This program truly makes the difference in hundreds of lives each month, and we're lucky enough to have with us today Mitch Kamen, the CEO of Betzedek, along with Mr. Meyer Jacobs, a survivor and client of the Holocaust Survivors Justice Network, to tell us about the impact. We hope that their presence here is not only a celebration of this great work, but also helps others throughout the city who may be unaware of this program and helps them to access it. So without further ado, we'd like to share a quick video about the program.
The federal government pro bono program originated in 1996 when President Clinton issued an executive order telling all federal agencies to encourage their employees to do volunteer work, and it mentioned federal attorneys and pro bono work specifically. It also designated the Department of Justice to coordinate the implementation of the order government lied.
I think all lawyers have a responsibility to provide pro bono service. As lawyers, we have great responsibilities to give back. Government lawyers face unique problems in engaging in pro bono activities. Unlike their private counterparts, they have to do it on their own time, they have to use their own resources, they're not paid, there are ethical restraints that they have to deal with.
What I have seen that makes it such an excellent program and an excellent model for others is twofold. First, by the resources that DOJ has committed to this program. It has provided an incentive to other agencies to also...
And I have to apologize, somehow we have the section that they didn't want to play, but it gives you at least a little bit of an idea. So we will move on and ask Mitch Kamen to speak about the program.
Welcome, Mr. Kamen.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Councilmember Karetz, thank you so much for this recognition of our program. I apologize for the video. The American Bar Association sent us a different segment, but I'm grateful to have the chance to highlight our work with Holocaust survivors today, particularly as well over 30% of Holocaust survivors living in Los Angeles and in the country still struggle to meet their basic needs and live well below federal poverty standards. At Betzedek, we assist survivors in Los Angeles County through the great work of attorneys like Lisa Hoffman, who is here with us today. Lisa, do you mind standing up? Thank you for all you do. And also through the work of the Holocaust Survivors Justice Network, which, as the council member stated, is the largest pro bono mobilization of its kind in the history of our country, and thanks to the partnership with 150 law firms and more than 30 Jewish family services around North America, we've already assisted over 5,000 survivors in North America, and we're currently mobilizing to help thousands more in the coming months. So thank you for your support for that.
And now, if we could ask Mr. Meyer Jacobs, a survivor and client, to tell us a little bit about the impacts of this program.
My name is Meyer Jacobs. Thank you very much for inviting me here. Thank you for the councilman. Thank you for everybody. But I want to talk about Betzedek. Betzedek is an organization for me, for my wife, for Edith, really, they're working very hard for survivors, and we are here in the United States of America, and we're very helpful and very thankful for everything. Betzedek gave me the first step here in the United States. We come here with nothing, and Betzedek gave me the first $1,000 loan to start a new business. But I was a professional person, and I born in Hungary, and I come here with a trade. I was a baker, and nobody wants to give me a job because the union didn't want to take me. So Betzedek gave me the $1,000 loan, and they told me, "You cannot pay interest on it," because the Jewish religion said, "If you give sadaka, then it's not allowed to You cannot pay interest on it. You're going to pay me the money when you have it, and then, yes, I wish you good luck." So I don't want to take too much time. I would like to tell you a lot of things for my life and for my wife, Edith, but so far, thank you very much, and I'm very happy to be here, to meet such a beautiful, nice people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. Karetz, for this presentation. We shall never forget, and we must always remember, one Holocaust after another Holocaust after another Holocaust continue on our planet every single day throughout the world. And what happened in Germany, we can never forget that. Why? Because innocent, decent human beings were taken away and killed. And if we can remember the horrificness of that, maybe that will impact us in all the present situations around the Earth where one could say, "This is a concern," be it Dafar or be it other places. So you are a testament and a statement. You are the light, bringing it to all of us about what happened then, and we thank you very much for standing up and always remembering it and keeping it in our conscience. Thank you.
And so we'd like to present this commendation to the Betzedek Holocaust Survivors Justice Network, and to Betzedek for establishing it and its groundbreaking international initiative which provides free legal services to Holocaust survivors and helps them obtain reparations. So thank you on behalf of the council to this great organization.
Thank you very much, Betzedek, and thank you, Mr. Karetz, for that presentation. If you can call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Alarcon Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer Karetz, Prokoryn Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, 12 members present and before, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we will go to Mr. Wesson as the next presentation, but let's run through the agenda just before. If we can please take up the first items.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Perry seconds, without objection. Those will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well.
On the regular agenda, first items are items noticed for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to May 7th.
Okay, without objection. We'll go ahead and do that. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, Items 4 through 30. Items 4 and 5 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commissioner nominations on the desk.
And that would leave before council, Items 6 through 30.
Okay, 6 through 30, Ms. Perry. 6 for Ms. Perry.
Backup one for the other stuff.
Any other specials, colleagues? 7 through 30. Mr. Weezer?
29, please.
29 for Mr. Weezer.
And, Mr. President, on item number 30, there are two reports on the file, and I understand the library department is not available to date, if there are any questions on that.
Mr. President, and could we fold this into the budget which is going to be released, or I would just say, let's continue it to a date in the future?
Why don't we do it one week? The mayor's budget will come out next week, so...
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
We'll continue that one week till Friday, number 30.
Thank you.
Without objection. Any other specials, colleagues? On 7 through 30, or 7 through 28 now? Yes, Mr. Karetz?
If I could call number 21 special for Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay. And so on the rest, let's take up the balance, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 31 through 74. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards, I believe, on 35, 40, 42, 56, 58.
Okay. We'll call that special for cards. I'd like to call 43 special. Mr. Labange?
34 special for the very special Ms. Hahn.
All right. Thank you. Are there specials? Mr. Zine?
73, Mr. President.
73 for Mr. Zine. Mr. Weezer? 68 for Mr. Weezer. Mr. Rosenthal?
60 and 62 have substitute motions going around on them.
Okay, 60 and 62 for Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Parks?
56 and 65 forthwith after the approval.
Okay. We have a card on 56, but 65 will send forthwith without objection. Ms. Perry, did you have another?
I'm going to 78. I'm waiting.
Okay. Let's go ahead on the... We'll close the public hearings on the others. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item on the continuation agenda, item number 77, is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay. Do we have any cards on that?
I believe there are cards on that item.
We'll call that special for cards on the public. Next item?
Next item is item number 78, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held, and there are no cards that I have.
Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing, and yes, Ms. Perry? Okay? Ms. Perry?
78 and 79.
We're not going to go at 79, a special meeting, till a little bit later, but we'll call 78 special right now. Okay? Let's return then to our presentations, and we'll send 65 forthwith without objection per Mr. Parks' instruction. Yes, Mr. Parks, did you have another?
I think we can handle both 75 and 76 in open session if there's no...
Okay. Does anybody wish to take 75 or 76 and to close? If not, let's go ahead and... What were the recommendations? Do we need to state those, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. On the first item, item number 75, that settlement in the case of Matt Sinsarver and Stein versus the city, and the settlement amount is $190,000.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, sorry, Mr. City Attorney?
Just to clarify, that's a partial settlement for two of the individuals, and the third individual will be... Council has given our office further direction.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next is 76.
76, and that settlement in the case of Martin versus the city, that's a workers' comp item, and the settlement amount is $181,777.50, plus a life pension thereafter at a weekly rate of $193.27.
Okay. Let's go ahead on number 76. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can reconsider 61, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And I'll call that special, please. Mr. City Attorney?
Just for further announcement on the settlement, the two plaintiffs with whom the city settled were Stein and Sarver.
Thank you. I was wondering who they were. Appreciate that. Mr. Wesson is now going to make the next presentation from Council District 10, and I know there's somebody in the audience who is looking for a companion to take home today.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. Today is one of my favorite days on the council. It's Pet Adoption Day, and I have with me a four-month-old Lab and Fiesla mix. A staff member just said I should call it a chweenie, but it's a pretty dog, and it's my understanding that the Fiesla is a German dog that they really like to run. They don't believe he'll get too much bigger than this. He'll probably max out at about 30 pounds. I want you to look at the coloring. This has to be the most beautiful coat that I've seen on any of the pups that we've brought to City Hall to try to find a home. He's very friendly, likes to kiss, and... He's very friendly, likes to kiss and, don't you? He likes to kiss and he's looking for a home. If you are looking for unconditional love, I've got a feeling that you can get it in this little fella. So we have a 100% adoption rate since we've been doing this Adopt a Dog program and I would, I'm hopeful that somebody either here in the council chambers or someone listening to this on the telephone or someone watching this on Channel 35 will come down. We're going to keep him here for a little while. I'd like for you all to race down. I do not believe he's going to last too long. Again, he is a male, a Labrador mix. If you're watching on television, his ID number is A1106687. Again, that is A1106687. So we've even put a nice little collar on him which he cannot wait to take off. So anyway, if you're looking for love and more importantly, if you want to save a life, we do the very best we can in our city shelters to find homes for our pets, but when we're unsuccessful, they're put to sleep. So if you want to be this little doggy's angel, guardian angel, then please let us know. We'll be in the back for a while. So here, I'm going to show you off to the crowd.
Aww.
Don't just say "aw," say "yes."
This is a good-looking. I just got one three weeks ago, so I definitely will not be able to go home.
That whole part of the audience, Mr. Weston, is filmmakers and that's a star dog, so you got to push it hard on them.
He's got actor potential. He could be the new Benji. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much. And again, that is, that animal and so many other beautiful animals are available for adoption right now, so please, anybody here could take that home today and we have many others just as beautiful. I'll be giving the next presentation. Ms. Perry, could I ask you to switch out with us? I'm doing one.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. To my left is an average group of Angelenos, average but extraordinary. Average in that they all have scripts that they're probably carrying around with them and they are all filmmakers who document the life of LA, but extraordinary because of the talent that they have assembled here today. Los Angeles Magazine and LA Works sponsored a competition that asked Angelenos to submit short films about life in our city and I was honored to serve as one of the judges in the competition. We got nearly 100 submissions from people of all walks of life and the films are as diverse as the population that we have here in Los Angeles. Today, the folks that are assembled are the filmmakers, the dreamers, the eyes of the eight finalists. They're clever films, touching, humorous, sharp, moving odes to our city of angels and to quote Tom Laban, each one of these folks are angels in the city of angels. The winning films, he has to clap because he's lying. The winning films will receive coverage in Los Angeles Magazine, a screening in a major theater, and a meeting with a top entertainment agent or executive. And today we wanted to share the two winners that we announced just a moment ago. And I'd like before that to bring up the sponsors of the competition, from LA Works, Deborah Bruci, who we all know from the great work that LA Works does on behalf of all the nonprofit community here in Los Angeles, and Mary Melton, the editor-in-chief of LA Magazine, to both give us some brief remarks before we watch the films. So Deborah?
On behalf of LA Works, Los Angeles's premier volunteer action center, I would like to congratulate the Get L.A. contestants who demonstrated the power of the individual to make a difference in the Los Angeles community.
Mary? Which is, is this one a little short?
And Mary Melton, that was extremely short. Short speeches win elections, so I'm voting for her. But Mary, come on forward.
Sure, just present, was your pick?
Sure. Do you want to say anything in general?
Yeah.
Then we'll do the search real quick.
Okay.
Say something in general, then we'll do the search.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti, for being such a supportive participant in this, in this contest. And thank you to the members of the council today for having us here. These are really eight extraordinary filmmakers. We received, as Council President said, nearly 100 submissions and there's a common language that we all have in Los Angeles and that language is film. And these films were really extraordinary for the diversity. We got a glimpse of what the Angeleno filmmaker likes and what they don't like and it's, there were some surprising, some surprising revelations in that. Not surprisingly, they love their cars and their neighborhoods and they care deeply about them and they care deeply about each other and we really appreciate this opportunity. And I just would like to say that I'm glad that I was not a judge in this because I would have had a very difficult time choosing among these eight films. So thank you so much.
And nobody leaves here empty-handed today because all of these folks truly are winners and we'd like to, you to meet the eight finalists who will come to the podium to receive certificates that Mary and Deborah will help give out. So let's go ahead and.
Our eight finalists were, "To the City of Angels" by Jay McClatchy. Councilman Weezer may find this one interesting. "Eagle Rock, Los Angeles, California," an ode to the city of Eagle Rock by Evan Mather.
Okay. Jose.
Thank you very much.
That was a great film.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, he's, so Eagle Rock guy.
Eagle Rock.
Shout-out from the council. "LA, This is My City" by Al Villapondo. "Mrs. Kim" by Aya Tanamura. "Boxed in L.A." by Joey Schuber. And Clayton "Rocky Eagle." "The Bye" by Jeffrey Nagel.
This was a film about scoring a fix. Taco Truck.
Our audience selection winner went to "Flash" by James Song, Zachary Migdal, and Lucas Burns.
And the official selection of the jury that we all chose and that was the winner for this year's Get L.A. Film Competition is "Pearl" by Alyssa Price. And we will be playing all the films on Channel 35, but right now we're going to play the two winners.
I was born in Japan in April 2007. Later that year, I was adopted and moved to Los Angeles. Hi, I'm Pearl. This is my home, a garage on the west side, which is pretty luxurious. A lot of my friends, they have to sleep on the streets. The lady that carries me is called Alyssa. She's an actress, but we don't talk much, unless she needs my help. I take her to the best coffee shops for meetings, or to get work done. She protects me. And when we're on the road, I protect her. When an audition doesn't go well, I'm there for support. Other times, we celebrate. Not many people know this, but we both share a secret lab with the freeways. Sometimes, we drive all the way down Sunset Boulevard, just because. When I take Alyssa to her acting class, we pass by a big movie studio and I dream of a day we could drive through those gates. And no matter what happens, every day I tell myself, "Gosh, Pearl, you sure are a lucky
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Are you, okay.
Yeah, we're going to, all eight are going to be on 35, but we'll, it's called Flash and if it's, there it is.
There you go. Thank you.
The flash of a camera, an LED from a neon sign, a fluorescent in a hallway, a single lamp above the text, the sun through the smog. The city of angels is full of light and it drills my soul. It was the light that brought everybody to LA to make films, but it was another type of light that has kept the city alive. Los Angeles is a living organism that breathes and eats. Like a plant whose growth cannot be restrained, it sprouts from and across the California soil, budding with luminosity. It thrives on the light to survive and we are the lights. The actor, the musician, the model, the banker, the janitor, the street vendor, the homeless, these are the lights, coexisting like bulbs on a strand as each one moves at the speed of light emitting wavelengths across the color spectrum as they fuel LA. Red, green, blue, yellow. I wake in the morning to see all the colors. They walk in human forms coated in cloth. Each light shines differently, some more eager to be the brightest, others content with their own shine. Nevertheless, LA will house them all. She is so radiant that she teaches torches how to shine. Flash. In front of the camera, a model poses before the press of a button. Flash. A negative is exposed to an image of light. Flash. The sweep of a mop across the floor. Flash. A match striking against the surface to create warmth. Flash. Life happens in a flash. It is a spark that kindles and burns and it is a spark that will never die, but the people, all the different types of people, this is what makes LA so wonderful. They are the sparks that keep the fire burning and the light flashing, the light of creativity, the light of beauty, the light of necessity, the light of art, the light of stability, the light of sound, the light of the unfortunate. However the light shines, the city of Los Angeles is the marquee and we are its bulbs. LA will always attract light from the darkness for it gives us a chance to live and the will to survive. Shine on, Los Angeles. I love LA.
Congratulations again to all the finalists and to the winners and we look forward to seeing you next year. It looks like LA Magazine's going to do this again, so get your ideas and your cameras ready and we'll see you at Get L.A. next year. Thanks very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And Mr. Zine, Council District 3, to speak about National Dispatchers Week very quickly.
Thank you, Madam President. Los Angeles Police Department Communications Division, 2010 National Dispatchers Week, April 11th through the 17th marks National Dispatchers Week. A time to acknowledge police service representatives, these wonderful ladies, the critical role they play in public safety. Annual event established in 1992 by President Bush honors police dispatchers nationwide for providing vital emergency services in their respective communities. Communication Division is the largest entity within the Los Angeles Police Department, consists of police service representatives, PSRs, who are responsible for answering 9/11 calls for police, fire, emergency, medical service. The dispatchers are an integral part of public safety net for Los Angeles. They provide dispatch support for all geographic patrol, traffic, and specialized divisions within the Los Angeles Police Department. Twenty-nine and 2009, they provided all dispatching services for LAPD officers and answered 3.9 million calls for police service from the public. 3.9 million calls in the dispatch center. On Monday, Chief Beck and I personally honored the PSRs for their hard work and commitment to the safety of our police officers, the people of Los Angeles. I'd like to present a certificate of recognition from our city due to Communication Division for all the hard work and dedication through the years and they have a dispatch center downtown, a dispatch center in the San Fernando Valley, identical centers. If you haven't been to a dispatch center, LAPD, you need to see it. It is state-of-the-art. These ladies work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, never take a break, protecting the people of Los Angeles. So Captain, are you going to speak?
I was going to let.
Okay. Here's our cat. She commands the entire ship.
Thank you for honoring the dispatchers during Dispatchers Week. I'd like to introduce and have one of the PSRs that actually dispatched the calls to you. And just remember, they are to calm during the most people's crisis and most people's chaos. Monica Delatorre.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of all of the police dispatchers and 911 operators for the city of Los Angeles, I would like to thank you all for recognizing us. And even though we too are also affected by work furloughs, we do appreciate being recognized for all of our hard work and please remember, we will always be the first true responder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Let's hear it for the dispatchers, the LAPD 9/11 dispatchers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation will be by Council District 14, Clean and Green Crew. You ready? Council District, you, yeah. Council District 14.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President, and I'm really excited here to stand with some hard-working individuals who work out there each and every day to beautify our city and we're talking about clean and green. It is a youth-based LA Conservation Corps program that provides environmental work experience to youth in the ages from 14 to 17. So you can see, this is a wonderful program that not only goes out there and does some great work for our city, but it helps young people with work. It helps them develop skills that they can use later in life and it also is a youth development program. And it also is a youth development program that gives these young people a place to provide some positive experiences with adults and a way of giving back to our great city of Los Angeles. I know that they work throughout the city of L.A., but we wanted to come in today and recognize them for the work that they do, in particular in Council District Fourteen. They have been very, very active these last few years. Last year alone, they cleaned up six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight streets and seventy-one alleys, and they picked up a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand pounds of trash. Three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand pounds of trash. So we wanted to recognize them for the wonderful work they're doing, thank them, and to me, it's just a pleasure when I see those trucks lined up on streets, I see the young boys and girls out there helping out in any way they can. And we have huge events, they're always out there providing any support that those events need. We can't thank you enough for the work you do. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I wanted to recognize some of the management, and we also wanted to recognize some of the young people who do the work. But first, let me thank, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Pablo Cardosa, the Clean and Green Senior Program Manager. Congratulations, and thank you so, so much. Also with us is Jose Gerarte, Clean and Green Crew Supervisor. And why is yours brown and everyone else's is green?
I'm pretty.
He said he's pretty. Thank you. And also, we wanted to recognize Lorena Umana, the Clean and Green Coordinator. She will also share a few words with us. Thank you both so much, Lorena.
Good morning, and thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Weisar and staff, for taking the time to acknowledge the L.A. Conservation Corps Clean and Green Program, for the services provided in Council District Fourteen, and to the city of L.A. Thank you so much for this acknowledgement.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We also have some young crew members with us today, and let us acknowledge them. Agustín Espaza, thank you for your work, Agustín. Ashley Ataido, Natalie Mendez, Narit? Is that correct? Narit Mendez, Diana Stephanie Cervantes, Maria Antonia Cardenas. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much for your work, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar, and congratulations to everybody. We'd like to recognize now Council District Eight and Councilmember Bernard Parks, who will be doing a presentation on behalf of Councilmember Smith and Council District Twelve.
We're gonna get you a mic at home.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Come on up here, Mike. Colleagues, today, on behalf of Mr. Smith, we are gonna honor Mike Nyho, and he has a remarkable story. He created a program which is called Swim With Mike. It's a fundraiser swim-a-thon for your entire family. It supports the Physically Challenged Athlete Scholarship Fund. They have raised over nine-point-six million dollars over the last twenty-nine years. It's a fun-filled day, food, entertainment, celebrities, swim clinics, and Olympians, raffle tickets, I don't know if that's legal now, Mike, massage centers, and kids' corner. The event will take place tomorrow, April the seventeenth, at USC, to celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of Swim With Mike. To give you a background of how this came about, it was established in nineteen eighty-one. The swim was scheduled to be a one-time event organized by friends and teammates in behalf of Mike Nyho, a three-time All-American swimmer who was paralyzed from the chest-down following a motorcycle accident suffered in January nineteen eighty-one. Initially called Swim For Mike, the event was first held on March seventh, nineteen eighty-one, to raise money to purchase a specially-equipped van for Mike. A week prior to the first swim, Mike was still in the hospital, and his supporters planned to show him a video of the fundraiser once it was over. To everyone's surprise, Mike traveled by ambulance and made an appearance at the first event, in which over fifty-eight thousand dollars was raised that day, far exceeding the amount needed to purchase the van. At his suggestion, the excess funds were used to create the Physically Challenged Athlete Scholarship Fund at the University of Southern California, the only one of its kind in the country. Inspired by the overwhelming support, Mike promised to swim in future events to raise money for disabled athletes. He kept his promise and swam the following year, and with his participation in the pool, Swim For Mike was appropriately renamed Swim With Mike. Mike now co-chairs the organizing committee for the annual event, which has raised over nine million dollars, and they provided over ninety-three scholarships to physically-challenged athletes at thirty-four universities from Washington, D.C. to Honolulu. These funds go to physically-challenged athletes who have overcome life-challenging accidents or illness. They come from various levels of competitive athletic experience, and they represent over twenty sports. Scholarships are rewarded to recipients at universities throughout the United States. Today, we want to not only honor Mike, but also to bring attention to the public that they certainly are encouraged to come to the thirtieth anniversary at USC on Saturday, April the seventeenth. And so, Mike, on behalf of Mr. Smith, who's taken a little time off before budget starts, I wanted to provide you this congratulatory certificate, and certainly ask you to keep up the good work, and certainly am pleased to be able to comment on your remarkable story. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Park. Thank you very much, the members of the council, Councilman Smith. The Swim With Mike program, and this is more about Swim With Mike than it is Mike Nyho, without a doubt, as you mentioned, started thirty years ago. The University of Southern California has been our home base for the whole time. The student body, the athletic department, everyone gets behind us and allows us to raise, well, the last three or four years, we probably raised about fifty percent of our money, so maybe be close to four million dollars over the last four years. Our event is tomorrow morning. If you wanna help us out, you can go online to swimwithmike.org and make an online donation, or please come down, it's a lot of fun. We help kids that need help, and we've been able to put, as Councilman Park said, ninety-three people through school. We currently have forty on scholarship at thirty-three different universities around this wonderful country. But it's about the city of Los Angeles, mostly, and the people in this community that support our event. So, what a tremendous honor for Swim With Mike. Thank you so very much, we appreciate it, and again, thank you for your time. Thank you. And before you leave, Mr. Laban, we'd like to add his good wishes, too, Mr. Laban.
Mike, congratulations in this whole episode of life. You don't know what challenges happen, and then greatness comes. And I remember your friends when USC used to stay at the Hyatt on Wilshire, they were one of the first sponsors, right there, Jerry Simmons and everybody in the Swim With Mike program that kinda took off, but now it's so special. It's great, Mr. Parks, you and Mr. Smith honor this very worthy program. Another hand for Swim With Mike and Mike at USC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to recognize Council District Seven, Councilmember Alarcon. If you're ready, but before that, I know there's been a motion circulated on Items sixty and sixty-two, Mr. Rosenthal said, and the substitute are taken care of, so we can open the roll on those two as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those two are approved, we'll send those forth with. And if we can now have the last presentation, Mr. Alarcon? Okay, we will, why don't we go to the items called Special while we're waiting that? If we can go to the first items, please. Actually, we can take up the Commissioner nominations.
First item is item number four, and that's confirmation of Ms. Jamie Lee to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Okay, we have Ms. Jamie Lee, if you'd like to come on forward. And this came out of Personnel Committee, is that correct?
Audits.
Audits, excuse me. My apologies. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jamie Lee is an attorney who resides in the wonderful Council District that I have the pleasure to represent. She's highly qualified and will be joining the dynamic and hard-working Quality and Productivity Commission, and I want to briefly highlight some of her qualifications. As Executive Vice President of Jameson Services, she helped oversee a commercial real estate portfolio of over a hundred-and-thirty-five properties. She's managed the California Market Center, a wholesale fashion facility in the city. She currently serves as a Board Member and Secretary of the L.A. Fashion District, Business Improvement District, and she's a member of the California State Bar and graduated magna cum laude from USC. And as the Councilmember that represents UCLA and is a Bruin, I ask the council not to hold that against her. She's very qualified, and I urge you, I vote for her.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Dennis P. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw you on Monday. You attended the meeting, Quality and Productivity Commission, and we discussed a lot of issues. What do you think about making the changes that we discussed with these hard economic times, with the issues at hand, and what you can do as a Commissioner with your fellow Commissioners regarding quality and productivity?
Well, on the one hand, I think not only do I have experience looking at and reviewing and creating budgets for a large real estate company, but I think that coming from a family business and the experience that I've had at Jameson Services, I've come from the perspective of running a business as if every dollar going out is my own. And I think I've applied that perspective to every other board that I've served on, every other community group, and any company that I've worked for and now represent. I think there are so many dynamic members of the Commission. I was very excited to see the passion that they had, not only in creating a game plan for what we wanted to do with the audits, but also in creating a set of virtues and values that we wanted to pursue as well.
I know there's some frustration with the Commission, the lack of support, and I know you're a USC graduate, to use some interns or somehow to give the assistance that the Commission needs to get the job done, since the city's not providing any more support for the Commission to carry on the functions.
Absolutely. I interned for Howard Berman after my first year of law school. I think USC has amazing programs to give credits and units to people who want to gain experience in political offices and for commissions. I'm sure every other school in the area does as well, so I think outreach to that extent would be very successful.
So you can be helpful with that, bring them some assistance. So, it's a great Commission, I think, as I said during the meeting when I was able to present my concerns in these hard economic times, quality and productivity, key issues in that Commission would be very important in that, and to try and break it through that environment, that it's just a Commission, it's a Commission that can really have an impact on all the departments and all the resources that the city must provide. As we struggle with the budget, we still need to provide those services, and quality and productivity are key of those services that we provide. So, I was very impressed, the fact you did attend the meeting. I know the other Commissioners were very impressed with your resume, so I'm just happy to see you here for this confirmation.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to rise to support someone who will serve on this Commission. I'm familiar with your family, your family's history, and your work and dedication to Los Angeles, and the Wilshire Center area, and throughout Southern California. I think having someone who has a business background certainly is very important to help try to find all the places for everybody in this very special, special place called Los Angeles. So I say, kumsa'mida, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Laban.
Thank you. Any last comments you'd like to add?
No, I'm very excited to be here and to contribute, however I can.
Great. Well, thank you for offering to do that, and we will take a vote to make it official. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we do have one last presentation, and Councilmember Alarcon, we'll give that, then we're gonna go out of order, and I believe take up Item seventy-eight after that.
Councilmembers, as you know, once a month I try to recognize programs that are contributing to child safety, and this month I'd like to recognize several groups who are involved in trying to make our children safer by getting the word out and sponsoring a Children's Safety Fair, and this is actually the third annual San Fernando Valley Children's Safety Fair, and it's gonna be held at the Valley Swap Meet in Panorama City, and I thought it was time that I recognize this group for doing the work that they're doing. You know that, I've said many times in public, my son was killed in a car accident. Ironically, their event is on May first, and that is the actual day that my son died in my arms, so it's a very... It's a day that obviously I will always set aside for my special thoughts, but it makes me very gratified to know that these people will be conducting on that day something that will address exactly the concerns that I've had about child safety, and most particularly, pediatric trauma care. And so, we want to recognize the Panorama City Neighborhood Council, Tony Wilkerson, who is one of the best presidents of neighborhood councils in the entire city of Los Angeles, and I say that as the immediate past Chair of the Neighborhood Council Committee for the city of Los Angeles, and the Valley Trauma Center, Carrie Myers is here. We thank them for contributing to this effort. I do wanna recognize Panorama City Valley Indoor Swap Meet. They have a very clean operation in Panorama City, but they're also very participatory in community events, more than any other swap meet I've ever worked with, and we have a few in my district. The Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles, Susana Lopez is here, and we wanna thank them for continuing to keep people informed about the various things that they can do for child safety. There will be many activities for the kids, free entertainment, but most importantly, child and family safety and health information and services, free lunch and beverages for participants. But this is a way for the community to come together in a way that also informs them, particularly on ways to keep their children safe. Most importantly, I mean, we take things for granted. We've recognized many people for child safety activities since I've come back to the city council, but people still forget, when there's only one car seat available, they'll have two kids, and only one in the car seat, and one will be in a regular seatbelt improperly. There are traffic stops, in fact, I can tell you, we have a, there's sort of a speed trap in front of my house, quite frankly, I don't know why, but the police department has put a speed trap. I hate to call it a speed trap, I shouldn't, right, Tom? I'm sorry. We have a speed checkpoint right in front of my house, and quite often, people are being sighted. In fact, many mornings when I'm coming to work, there will be a car that is being towed. So I think more people know where I lived than any other Councilmember in the history of Los Angeles, but know that when you're passing my house, slow down. And so, we keep having to remind people of the various things that they can do to make our people safe, especially our children. So I'd like to thank all of these people for their participation, and I'd like to ask Tony Wilkerson to step forward on behalf of the group to express his sentiments about this. And with that, let me present these certificates, first of all, to the Panorama City Neighborhood Council, Tony Wilkerson, President. The Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles. And to the Valley Trauma Counseling Center, VTCC. Thank you so much.
It's really our honor to participate with the Valley Trauma Center and Councilmember Richard Alarcon in sponsoring this Children's Safety Day. The people that I have with me are also active, the Girl Scouts have done wonderful things for the young women of Panorama City, New Directions for Youth, Steve Martinez is active in our gang prevention programs, is part of the Grid Zone. You know, it's eighty thousand people in Panorama City, it's a small city in itself, and almost half of those are kids. And the Neighborhood Council, we don't have service clubs, we don't have a local Chamber of Commerce, but thanks to the Sea of Los Angeles, we have a Neighborhood Council. And together, all of us working in that Neighborhood Council can perform a lot of these roles, and most precious of all is our children. So thank you very much for your support.
And on behalf of the Valley Trauma Center and the Panorama Neighborhood City
And on behalf of the Valley Trauma Center and the Panorama Neighborhood City Council, New Directions for Youth, Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles, and all of the other great community partners that we are collaborating with, I'd like to thank the city council for recognizing us for our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to go to Councilwoman Perry. I know we do have one more commissioner, but we're going to move Ms. Perry's things just before the commissioner. No, no, we'll go to yours next.
I'll show you.
And we thank Mr. Lee for his patience. Item number 78. Ms. Perry.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. I introduced this motion last year, and the completion of this process could not have come at a better time. This was a hard-working task force. It came together to bring this ordinance to fruition. I want to thank John Wickham from the CLA, Korea Bossi, Pat Guinness, Mary Jane Aquino of the Convention Center, Terry Martin Brown, City Attorney's Office, and Diana Mongogley of the CAL, and Barbara Kirkleyder's LA Inc. This is regarding flexible demand-based pricing, and it will allow the Convention Center to adapt to seasonal changes in demand, last-minute cancellations, and be more competitive with other convention space in the region, thereby maximizing potential for much-needed revenue. And I think this ordinance makes a lot of sense. The city needs to maximize revenue, and it's an easy way to accomplish that, and I ask my colleagues for an eye vote.
Anybody else on this item? Oh, sorry. Can I come forward?
Good morning. This is, I'm Philip Hill, Assistant General Manager, Chief Operations Officer, Los Angeles Convention Center.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A staff report?
Uh huh.
I'm willing to waive that in the interest of time.
Okay.
Is there need, is somebody?
No, no.
Okay. I just would like to ask for an eye vote.
Okay, great.
Okay.
You're very convincing. Just by saying your name, people are convinced.
Thank you. Basically, appreciations and thank you to the leadership team.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
That is approved. And Ms. Perry, was there another one that you wanted to move out of order before?
Um, yeah, it was item six, I believe.
Okay.
Item six, again.
Take up item six without objection?
Yeah.
We've approved 78. Did you want to speak on that? Okay, I'm sorry, let's reconsider 78, please.
Should we reconsider that?
Yeah, Ms. Han wanted to speak on that as Chair.
Okay.
Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to bring this to our attention. This is, we're going to be establishing a flexible pricing for our convention center. And you know, in the days when we're being bombarded by the ideas of privatizing some of our facilities, of running things more like a business, of being more accountable and transparent, our convention staff came to us and said, one of the things we could allow them to do, and of course, we have to do it by ordinance, is allow them to be flexible in their pricing with conventions and events in the convention center. And perhaps Economic Times would deem that, or cancellations of events would deem that, and it gives the staff the ability to use their management skills, to use their marketing skills, and offer a different kind of a pricing to lure in more events and conventions. I think this is a good idea. I think this will help our convention center really be on the cutting edge, really be flexible to bring in more conventions and events at our convention center. So I want to thank the convention staff for bringing this to us. I want to thank them for their entrepreneurial spirit in running our convention center a little more like a business. So they have assured us that by us doing this, it will really increase the conventions, increase the events at the convention center. So I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Our Chair for her leadership on this, she's very modest about it. Bottom line is, the convention center is a money-making, profitable center for our great city, and that's a rare thing to say. Shall I say it again? It is a revenue generator, profit-related, private-sector-type government function there at the convention center. They're doing a great job. Wherever we can give them flexibility in their marketing schemes, giving them no encumbrances but opportunities, the better off we are. So this is a great motion, and I appreciate Ms. Han, your leadership on this. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, with this motion to change the privatized, move the convention center into this new process of meeting needs, will that also involve a change in the living wage ordinance? Because I believe that the convention center workers are under the original L.A. living wage ordinance, which makes their pay lower than the workers at the airport. So now that the convention center will be more competitive, will their living wage ordinance, will it also increase?
It's not affecting their living wage ordinance at all, so.
So it will have no effect?
Not an effect at all. If you have any other comments that have to do with specific rental pricing, it has no effect on that.
Well, raising the rent price should also.
It does not, sir. Do you have any other comments?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. I will close our comments on item number 78. Please open the roll again. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved. Ms. Perry, item six.
For six, do I need to have the clerk read the description, or just go ahead?
No, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, that was called special. Is that for cards?
Were they called special cards?
It was called special by you. Did you want that always on consent?
No, we can just go ahead and open the roll, and that'd be okay.
And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we can have the next commissioner nomination. Mr. Lee, come forward. Thank you for your patience. I know Mr.
She has like.
Yeah, let's do forthwith on both of the ordinances. And I know Mr. Reyes is excused today. He would normally introduce you. I'd like to turn to Vice President of the Committee, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I was in Plumb Committee when Mr. Lee came before us. I want to thank him for his willingness to serve, and I want to also thank him, given his broad knowledge and experience that he has as a professional and also as a community member who is active in the community, for him to lend up his time to do this. He expressed to us in the committee his interest in being open-minded as issues come up, and recognized that one of the most important things we can do in our city is to provide our local neighbors with a voice on how they would like their neighborhood to be developed, given our local planning commissions. So thank you, Mr. Lee, and if you could just tell the council your interest in serving on this commission and anything else you'd like to share.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. One thing that I think I could say, that I will be open, and I will listen, and I'm open-minded. Obviously, we're going through some tough times in the economy. Creating commerce is important, not only for City of Los Angeles, but as well as in the United States. As Councilman Corretz and I spoke, it's also important to understand the people that live in the city. So with that, I am totally open-minded. I appreciate Councilman Rosendahl taking his time to meet with me, and for those that haven't had the opportunity to meet personally or reach out to you and take the opportunity to get to know each other a little better. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Zein, Mr. Corretz, and Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zein?
Everyone's going to question you, Mr. Lee. I don't know why, you're a nice man.
Okay.
You run a nice operation, and you want to commit to the city of Los Angeles. The focus of development, the focus of planning, the focus of affordable, the focus of workforce, workforce housing, senior housing. We're at a crisis where folks come to council and say, rent control. We can't afford to have the landlords increase the rent. The power rates are probably going to go up against my objection. How do you, as an individual involved in this process, when it comes to the planning, when it comes to your responsibilities, how do you plan to balance all that? The workforce, the people who want to work and live in the city, the issue of the landlords that need the money so they can pay the bills, the senior citizens on fixed income, the aspect of how are they going to be able to survive in the city? And then I'll throw one more component, transit. How we can have transit-oriented residential residents near public transit, so you don't have to use your car and fight traffic on the freeway, whether it be the 101 or the 405. It's a mess every single day, people trying to get to their destination. So there's a whole series, whichever one you want to do.
Okay.
Or take them all, because you're an intelligent man who can fix them all.
Well, as of right now, I don't know. I think every situation is different. You have to understand the situation as much as you can, and just listen to people, I think is important. And that's what I will do. At this time, I don't have a solution for anything. I'm not going in with the biased perspective on jobs, transits, anything like that. I think every situation is different, and I'll think about it, I'll listen to everybody, and I'll pray of a body to find my decision.
I like your honesty, because you haven't gotten into it yet, but when you get into it, you're going to have everybody pulling you one way or another. You're going to have the seniors pulling you for senior housing, you're going to have the workforce, you're going to have everyone pulling at you. So what you need to do is analyze it all, and you're an intelligent man who obviously has a successful business, and then sort it out basically for the betterment of Los Angeles, because it's going to affect the entire city. The West Side rents are extremely high. There are jobs out there, but oftentimes, they can't afford to live there because the rents are so high, even though they're close to work, and then they got a jam in the freeway. So you're going to be a juggler. You'll be a juggler, juggling all those matters, but I have confidence, I know you, and I know you have the ability to handle it. So you got my vote.
Thank you for the vote of confidence. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. I have a few questions, though. Particularly in my district, to some degree, Mr. Rosendahl's district as well, residents consider development to have significantly outstripped infrastructure and to be certainly beyond human scale in a lot of places. So the question is, how do you balance the demand for housing and development with the needs of existing residents and stability of existing neighborhoods?
I got a little taste of that before I got, I mean, before, on Tuesday with you and the city. I think what it came down to, just listening to your side perspective, Rosendahl's perspective, and why the mayor appointed me or nominated me in this position. So for me to be here and say I'm going to vote one way or the other, I think it's not genuine, but I think every situation, it comes down to the every situation. Councilman Cortez, I understand some of the issues, but not in detail at this point, but when it comes up and arises, I would be very open to talk to your deputy representative about where you stand and how you feel about certain things. And at the end of the day, I think we're serving the people of Los Angeles, and as long as we are on the same page of serving the people of Los Angeles, I think we can get through this step by step.
Well, maybe I can ask you a more specific question. What do you think the decision-making process is that you would use when considering exceptions and variances to the plans and regulations that were designed to protect communities? Because that's a lot of what will come to you, is those variances against the plans that are designed to provide those protections.
It comes down to listening and understanding the situation, and without having all the facts and understanding the backbone, I don't, I can't make any decision at this point. What I'm willing to do is just listen, and I don't know how I'm going to vote today or tomorrow. It's just, I don't have the facts in front of me. But I think I understand some compelling reasons why certain sectors want certain things, but my goal is to be balanced, and I'm going to be there for a while, and hopefully not one decision exemplify who I am, but my approach to this is to become a balanced person and be fair for the citizens of Los Angeles.
One other quick question. Do you think the city can do a better job of including environmental protections and green building practices in the planning process?
I think anything could be improved, in particular in this situation. If we're a little open-minded about some of the technologies or some other things that I've came across, I think there's a balance, you know, getting environmentally friendly at the same time, increasing productivity. For those technologies and resources that no house are out there, I mean, they may not be in Los Angeles, but it is out there, but I would definitely encourage anybody that wants to embark on something like that to do their due diligence and do their research and see how they could improve, not only the environment, but the traffic and what have you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning again. Good to see you. You know, the questions were extremely pointed, and that's because the West Side has a tremendous amount of development all the time. We're in a recession, people are out of work, but with the ocean breeze and the mountains and the wetlands, there's still development going on. But just to take Mr. Corretz to the next point, the people in our communities, in CD 5 and CD 11 for sure, engage themselves tremendously in lots of issues. I have eight neighborhood councils, they all have land use committees, they all spend a lot of sincere time in dealing with it. So to do a variance or a zone change is like the most difficult things for me to do if it's out of character and scale with community, because community matters to me, the people living there right now.
Right.
You know, and I can't take it when somebody says, well, SB 1818 allows me to just throw something down your throat. We will fight in the West Side if we don't feel it meets character and scale. So you're going to join one of the most exciting, dynamic democratic processes our city has. And since we spoke before, I have no questions, but thank you for stepping to the plate, and I look forward to your thoughtful decision-making, and most importantly, that you listen without any preconditions on any issue, and then work through the process of how you build consensus and coalition.
Thank you for your vote of confidence, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labanche.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your willingness to serve. It's a combination of traffic and transportation. Much of the West Side rejected heavy transit from whether it was the Diamond Lane in the 70s, and then the high-speed subway system is a, not high-speed rail, but the subway system, and then now the light rail is what is coming. All those things are important. Any participation, you could have an extra energy to try to work with that, and others in transportation will help solve West Los Angeles' challenge. It is a popular place to live because it's on the coast, it's got a great university there, as does the center part of the city. It has a lot of activities around there, but because there's such a high desire, and because Santa Monica, which is a great town, had to build so much commerce to meet their needs, causes us a traffic problem. But that's a big thing. Wish you well, and you live in the Palisades?
Yes, sir.
Good, so you only got one street in, one street out, Sunset Boulevard, so you know the feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, as the last speaker on the Q, so it's time for a vote now. You can please open the roll on Mr. Lee. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Thank you. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretz, Crickroyan, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wilson, Zein, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Item 79 is before us. We have a card, Arnold Sacks. Would you like to come forward?
Item 79, you're taking ownership of this rate increase that's proposed by DWP, yet you just voted two days ago, I'm reading in the newspaper that you voted for supposedly a 4.5 or 4.8, depending on how you read, which article you're reading, rate increase. So you're actually cutting twice and measuring once. It doesn't make sense. Why didn't you wait for them to propose their rate increase again? Or why, if you're taking control after they, why did you propose?
I can probably clear that up. This is from the April 6th meeting, you're referring to the April 15th meeting. Different meetings.
I'm sorry, please hold my time. Would you refer, say that again, sir?
Can't hold your time. I was just trying to clarify for you, this is asserting jurisdiction over the April 6th meeting, it had nothing to do with rate increases.
Had, what?
Thank you.
Had rate increase, just, so what does it have to do with?
Sorry, sir, it's on the agenda, but it's just a different meeting, I was clarifying that for you. If you have anything else to say on that, thank you. Ms. Perry?
Very much. Mr. President is Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee. I am deeply concerned about the financial well-being of the Department of Water and Power. The executives at the Department of Water and Power told the council that they are under-collecting $6 million every billing cycle, so when I saw that the board of the Department of Water and Power Commissioners approved increases amounting to several million dollars on six contracts, it gave me great pause. So I'm asking you to join me in asserting our jurisdiction on these contracts, so I can bring Department of Water can bring Department of Water and Power to the Energy and Environment Committee so we can all have a very clear understanding about where the money is coming from to fund these contracts and to come to a conclusion regarding the fiscal responsibility of this decision.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And is there someone from CAO here? And what I wanted to ask is if in fact our proposed 10% cutting contracts, does that also apply to proprietary departments?
David Luther from the CAO's office. There's several council motions on contracting. One is later today, your motion. But no, proprietor departments were not instructed to achieve a 10% reduction. They were instructed to report back to council on opportunities for contracting in and using city employees.
Okay. Does the council have any authority to ask them to do a 10% reduction in their contracts?
They can request, sorry. Again, I'm not gonna presume to be an expert on that issue, but I would say that you have the ability to request.
Request, it's not require, it's request.
Right.
Okay. Because I know we've been working very hard to identify various ways we could get more money to the general fund. One of the proposals, as proposed by a number of individuals, particularly Mr. Corretts, was to have a 10% reduction in what others are charging us to provide services to us contract. So I just wanted to see if it could be part of this discussion as we go back, whatever is the results of these contracts.
Yeah, I would add, the council's already had discussions with DWP and the port on the instruction that, for them to contract in. DWP was asked to come back to council with more detailed information, similar to what the Harbor Department had provided. So there will be an opportunity to have that discussion with DWP shortly.
No, we did ask the Harbor, the airport, and the DWP for their contracts, and so we could discuss them possibly reducing them by about 10%. Harbor came back with a pretty good report. We have yet to see the airport or DWP. Do you know when we're gonna get those?
Yes. The CAO, for one thing, it was not a request to reduce their contracts by 10%. It was just basically to identify the contracts for which city.
For a number of reasons. We wanted to see if we could reduce their contracts, and secondly, to see if there are any of those services that we currently contracting now to keep in-house to support some of our employees who are looking for work, yes.
The airport's transmitter was transmitted to our office, and it was not transmitted to the council. We just released a report this week on the 10%, a status report on the 10% reduction exercise for all non-proprietary departments, but we did include the airport's response in that report so that it would be officially transmitted to council. So council does now have the airport's report. It can be discussed when our report on the 10% reduction exercise gets discussed. Again, DWP was instructed.
So when can we get, my time is running out. So when can we get the airport and the DWP's report?
As soon as it is scheduled for council. It's already been transmitted to council.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Perry, this is an excellent idea. We need to do more of the scrutiny for our departments who are saying they have no funding available and who are holding us, telling us they can't shift over some of those general funds. We've got to provide more of the scrutiny, although we don't have any direct authority to do so. We're here meeting each and every day to try to find every dollar we can, and when we see these types of expenditures, we need to ask that of all our proprietary departments and make sure they're doing the same thing, that they're all tightening the belt as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And yes, I just asked for an aye vote.
Okay. Could we please open the roll on the motion? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Under 245 of the city charter, that jurisdiction is asserted. Fourth with please on that. And if we can adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, please. And go to the next item called special, please.
The next item, Mr. President, is item 21, and that was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay. Item 21 is before us. Councilmember Alarcon, is he with us here in chambers? Ask people, please, to not have outbursts from the audience, please.
Members, this is a relatively non-controversial item related to the business improvement districts and the approval of them. The reason I called it special is I wanted to ask for an amendment to the report. It came to our attention by the Community Development Department subsequent to the Jobs Committee that we should ask the mayor's office to designate a bird, a bird, a bid ombudsman. In other words, there should be, since we are now establishing many business improvement districts throughout the city of Los Angeles, it would be helpful if we identified one person in the mayor's office who the bids could work with and strategize and organize and convene perhaps all the bids. But in any case, if we could have that person identified, it would be helpful. So this, so the purpose of this special action is simply to amend the report, to approve the report, but at the same time, to ask that we add a, in recommendation two, to say that we request the office of the mayor to designate a bid ombudsman.
Anybody else wishing to be heard on the renewal of the Toy District bid? Mr. Alarcon's amendments are before us without objection. Sorry, Mr. Weezer, do you want to talk?
I'll go second that.
Oh, you're seconding it, okay.
Put the, hey, you take, I'm gonna take second. Put the, I'm gonna take second.
Okay. This is accepted as friendly. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item's item 29, and that was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Okay. Councilmember Weezer, item number 29 is before us now. Twenty-nine.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have additional questions, but they've all been answered. But actually, just want to bring to everyone's attention this motion that we provided a while back that will help us look over to see what other contracting processes are in place so that we could find more efficiencies. And although this motion was introduced a while back, we wanted to, it's more relevant today as we're going through our budgetary process and scrutinizing our expenditures for a city because although a lot of our discussion in the budget has been ways, try to find ways to increase our revenue, there's a lot more efficiencies that we could find in the way a city is contracting. And so this is simply asking for a review of our procedures and a real review of our protocols so that we could find some additional funding through that, and I look forward for the report. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll then on that item.
Hold on just a second.
Mr. Labonj, would you like to be heard?
Met Mr. Weezer on that and ask if there's an opportunity for whoever's doing that study to look at best practices throughout the country and other municipalities and county governments. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Mr. Weezer?
And, I mean, we just talked about asserting jurisdiction over DWP, and what I wanted to get to in that action as well is that, just like this motion speaks, it is asking all city departments to be requested to halt execution of any discretionary contracts that are not critical to their high priority services and work so that we can determine what work is being contracted out and what work is needed to be done. If the mayor is asking for a freeze on all their expenditures, we also need to be looking at what type of contracting the city is doing and halt those immediately so that we could take care of the need we have to close our huge budget deficit. I understand Mr. Luther's here as well, and I don't know if you want to give any comment on this item as well?
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. The only comment I would make is, of course, our office supports everything that you've outlined in the motion. This is to give you some expectation or some idea of the time it will take, though. This, we would consider a long-term assignment. It's gonna take us some time to actually go through this, and that's simply because contracting is not centralized in the city. There is an opportunity, I think, as you had mentioned, during the budget review process, the mayor releases his budget on Tuesday. We will be working very closely with the Budget and Finance Committee on looking at essentially what the base was for departmental contracts for this fiscal year, to categorize the changes in the mayor's proposed budget as to what reductions were achieved, and then again to work with the Budget and Finance Committee to essentially see what other contract reductions they would wish to make and coordinate responses on that. That's the opportunity we see for further contract reductions through the budget process. This, of course, we will do, but it will probably, the timing of this will probably not coincide very closely over the next three weeks as you deliberate the budget.
Okay. So, but a lot of this information may help the tail end of our budget process and also help inform us as we move forward to find additional efficiencies throughout the next fiscal year as well. Will we get that information and provide some recommendations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I asked for an aye vote.
Thank you. As a matter, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. If we can hold 34 on the table, we'll go to item 35 next.
And that was called special for cards.
Okay. We have a card on item 35, and I'd like to invite forward Dr. Clyde Williams, item 35.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Serrano, Northeast LA. The foreign trade zone, what does it generate? It generates trucks and a lot of traffic on 710 South and 710 North if it goes through. So what we're concerned about is that these fees, are they contributing to any study as to how to relieve the congestion around the port and on 710 and on 710 North? It should be part of a whole overall plan by the Harbor Department and the Board of Harbor Commissioners to relieve not just what happens in the port facilities themselves, but everything that's related to that. Sorry, reserve one minute.
Anybody wishing to be heard on item 35 from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Item 34 is next, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Han. It's called special for Ms. Han, not a vision theater, or Warner Grand, excuse me.
Thank you, colleagues. I just am very concerned, as we all are, for some of our issues with cultural affairs and some of our facilities that we're running. It's clear that the Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro, which is an icon, it's the cornerstone of the redevelopment and renaissance of our downtown San Pedro. It actually was saved and purchased by the City of Los Angeles under my predecessor, Rudy Savornich, and it really is a great facility. But I'm very concerned that there have been things said in the public and the press that we will look to find another organization to run it. But the RFP to contract with someone else to run it is, in my opinion, going very slow, and I am most afraid that by the time July 1st comes around, we won't have somebody in that, running that theater. We won't have got an RFP out on the street to contract with someone. So this motion basically tells Cultural Affairs, Tom, and it's gonna come to your committee, tells Cultural Affairs to get on the stick, get this RFP. I want to see this RFP when it comes to your committee. I don't want a status report on how it's going. I think you need to move quickly so that this theater does not go dark. That would be a big shame for San Pedro. We have a lot of events going on there. You know, in a couple of weekends, we have the Harbor LA International Film Festival put on by my friend Stephanie Marticich, and it's just, and you're all welcome to come to that, but it's important that Cultural Affairs moves quickly, produces this RFP so there is no lag time between when we feel we're not gonna be able to run it and the taking over of this theater by a qualified organization to continue to keep the doors open at this grand theater. Thank you very much. Did you hear my, and we're gonna refer, what I'd like us to do is refer to Tom's committee, but again, I do not want a status report. I do not want an update. I want the RFP and get that on the street. Can you tell I'm upset and angry?
We don't want to get you upset and angry, Ms. Han.
I know.
That's not good. All right, Mr. Labonj.
It's a grand idea for you to do this, as you always do for your district, Janice. But at the same time, as I'm looking for a representative here, what we do need is the administrative support to make sure these RFPs go through. We have this in committee waking. My deputy, Lisa, told me it's right online, but we need a little help from the CAO's office. So I don't see the representation. Mr. Miller, on these issues here, if you could just for a moment, please, on these variety of RFP RFQs, if your office could just oversee wherever they are, whether it's in the department.
Another example.
Whether it's in a office, that we are, that we were, to our best of our ability, expediting the process of getting these RFPs out, because it sometimes takes so long, we lose the opportunity to serve the people. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Miller.
That matters before us.
Yeah. And make sure the city attorney helps out, too.
Open the roll.
Thank you.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, there's been a request.
Thank you.
To go to number 43, please.
Yes.
So let's pull number 43 up, and Mr. Garcetti, number 43.
Very much, Mr. President. I know we have general public comment to go to next, and appreciate people's patience as we had a few critical staff that needs to go. Item number 43, colleagues, we will get a final vote on as an ordinance, but I want to thank Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer and Mr. Krikorian for moving this through plum and for the work that the city staff has been doing very diligently on this. This is an exciting day for me to see the efforts of us moving forward to promote urban farming here in Los Angeles. What we have before us today is called the Fruit and Flowers Freedom Act, which refers to the fact that we had been enforcing a somewhat unclear law in a somewhat arbitrary way, allowing certain things to be grown in backyards like herbs, but not flowers, even though many flowers are herbs and herbs are flowers, vegetables but not fruit, and that people were able to not only have this for their own access to fresh and healthy food, but also the ability to take whatever abundance they had and to be able to, what's called truck gardening throughout the country, but to be able to sell off that excess. That was something that was permitted, obviously, in agricultural areas, in manufacturing areas, but not in residential areas. And it seemed to be at a time when we're trying to encourage people, and so many people in their backyards and in their communities, on parcels of land that are designated as residential but then become community gardens, are doing things to have better and more healthy access to food where sometimes there aren't stores that provide it, or simply because they want to be close to the land. If you look at the city seal that's here before us, around it is grapes, oranges, and olives, which refer to the agricultural roots that made Los Angeles great. In fact, the grapes, at one time, were the number one wine-producing county in America until we outlawed grape growing in the early, I think, 20th century and kind of never went back, although now it is legal to grow grapes and to make wine again, in case you're wondering here in Los Angeles. I know we're gonna see the final ordinance before us in about a week's time. I think we can probably turn it on pretty quickly. But I personally want to thank the Planning Department. I want to thank the City Attorney's Office, and I want to thank our Building and Safety Departments for all stepping up. This came about because some folks were having city inspectors come and crack down, simply because they were growing things in their backyard and teaching people how to grow things and being able to sell the overabundance of that. But urban farming, we all know, increases a neighborhood's access to healthy, local, fresh produce. It serves to decrease traffic and reduce carbon emissions because people don't have to go to the market. In fact, about, it was a year and a half ago that my wife and I were able to grow about 80% of our own produce outside, in our own home, and there was no better feeling. Everything tastes better when you pull it from the ground, and you didn't have to go to the market to find something. You just go out to the garden and see what's growing and blossoming. This creates also more green space, it reduces our carbon footprint, and has the potential, really, to create economic benefits from local, sustainable jobs. The growing and the flowering of farmers' markets is evidence of that, of community gardens. Now it's a day that we should step forward and let those fruits and flowers be free and let them be grown and let Los Angeles return to its roots and a healthier tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Very well. Mr. Garcetti, on number 43, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That matter passes, and we are now gonna go to public comment. Barry Kramer. Barry Kramer. And after Barry Kramer will be Yami Polanos.
Good afternoon. My name is Barry Kramer. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm an operator of I'm an operator of a medical cannabis dispensing facility. I sure wish that I, I had a handicapped patient, medical marijuana patient, up here to hold in my arms. And with all due respect to the people that you honored today, and I feel a great respect for those people, the homeless dog got a lot more compassion from this council than the patients, medical marijuana patients of this city. And boy, I wish I had a film that I could show.
Excuse me, I'm holding your arm up.
I wish I had a film that I could show that, you know, showed how the City of Los Angeles is treating the medical marijuana patients of Los Angeles. I don't think you'd be so proud to show that on your screens here. This ordinance is criminalizing the patients when you have been charged by SB 420 and Proposition 215 to implement safe access for medical marijuana patients in Los Angeles. This ordinance does not do that. As an example, at my, at our collective, I've been receiving phone calls from our patients asking to be removed from our patient list for fear that their personal information is going to be taken by law enforcement. This is a sad day. I talked to a guy just the other day, he's about 54 years old, and he wants to be removed from our patient list. This is not because he's a criminal. This is because he's a professional here in Los Angeles, possibly a doctor, a lawyer, a nurse, a schoolteacher, someone who even might work here at city council, and he is scared for his job because this ordinance puts him at risk. It puts him at risk to stay in his job if he is found out to be a medical marijuana patient. I, I know that you have many amendments before you. I hope you will look at them seriously and...
Yami, thank you. Yami Bolanos. Bolanos, followed by Oliver Summers. Oliver Summers. Yami, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Yamilie Bolanos. I'm a registered voter of the City of Los Angeles. I am president of the Greater Los Angeles Collective Alliance, and I'm here to tell you guys that your over-restrictive ordinance is causing a lot of problems for the patients. And I've come here lots of times before and asked you guys to do the right thing for the patients. And you guys still have time to do that. Mr. Garcetti has called this ordinance a living ordinance. It has a lot of holes that need to be plugged up, and if they don't get plugged up, we may end up with utter ordinance, and that would be the worst thing that could happen in Los Angeles today. I beg you, I implore you, please, those of you that we will come to talk to, please help us, do the right thing, make this ordinance work for the patients. Thank you.
Oliver Summers, followed by Don Duncan.
Hello, folks. How are you? Good to see you all again today. I came to you the other day to respectfully ask if somebody could instruct the City Attorney's Office to return our calls, return some emails. This ordinance for the medical cannabis community is very convoluted, it's very confusing, and all I've ever wanted to do was follow the law the way you guys have written it so that I can provide to my patients within the law and legally the way that the California voters intended. So I have called the City Attorney's Office, oof, jeez, about 50 times. I've left them five personal business cards, I've left them messages, and I have not heard one word from them, no emails, nothing. And there's just so many questions that we have. I mean, literally, we can't be across the street from a residential neighborhood. Well, there are some blocks in Los Angeles that are over 1,000 feet long, and if there's, it's over 1,000 feet from one corner to another, and it's across the street, is that considered across the street? If I move, I'm higher on the list than some people. If I move into a location and they're already there, do I have precedence over them? Do they have precedence over me? As I said, all I want to do is follow the law. And if you guys can just help us get a representative to help us answer our questions, you would have no idea how much validity and help that would help us, because quite frankly, today, after sitting in the back of this room, watching those films about LA, which reminded me of high school, by the way, when I was in film school, yeah, and there's a reason why I stopped being in film school, too, after seeing such things like that, and then after watching the report on how the, these certificates that are being given are costing the city a fortune, and how many did we give out today? 10? So that's a huge waste of money, folks. Medical cannabis, tax it, we can give some money to the city, we can help get this beautiful, wonderful city that we all love back on our feet and back on track. Let's do it, folks. We can do this together.
Don Duncan, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Williams, you'll be up next.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Don Duncan, the California Director of Americans for Safe Access, which is the nation's largest medical cannabis advocacy organization, and I'm back here today because later you're going to be voting on an ordinance that starts the clock ticking towards the effective date of your medical cannabis regulations. And while this may seem to be a tying up of loose ends, I want to remind you that we're not yet finished with the work of regulating medical cannabis in the City of Los Angeles. I remember all the way back in 2004, taking my first meetings with city staff and the City Attorney's Office to bring us to this date, and while it's a historic milestone that we've come this far, the ordinance as it's adopted is problematic in many ways. And I've communicated with the offices about that, I will again in the future, so I won't spend the time this morning to list a whole laundry list of problems that I see with it. What I want to encourage you to do this morning is to keep working. I know you guys are tired of this issue, and many of the advocates are tired of stepping up to the podium and talking about it, but with a few small changes, you can make your existing ordinance a really good one. Right now, it sort of lumps the good guys and the bad guys altogether and confuses the issue. We can do better than that, and so I want to encourage you, as you're approached by advocates and patients in the weeks and the months to come, that you listen to them and take the steps that are needed to make some small changes that can avoid more bad PR, that can avoid more delay and more controversy and more litigation, and make those handful of small changes that take what is, right now, I think, one of the worst ordinances in its regulatory structure, and turn it into one that really works for the patients and the providers and for the community. So I want to encourage you to keep those doors open in these next few months as we work together, I hope, to improve this ordinance. Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Phil Estorati.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serrano, Northeast LA. Caltrans and MTA are at it again. They want the 710 North Extension Tunnel above ground. Yesterday, in public hearing in San Gabriel Valley, Doug Phaling reported that scoping for the 710 North will include above-ground, on-ground alternatives, not the tunnel, so they can take the tunnel name off it. San Gabriel Valley is now pushing to get the EIR started immediately. Scoping, alternative analysis, all of that needs to be slowed down. First off, they haven't even approved the geotechnical report through MTA. It was biased, unobjective, and did not consider a lot of things. So I would highly recommend that the council consider amendment to the previous resolution that we will be submitting probably next week for CD 1, 2, CD 13, and 14, to amend the resolution, and just oppose 710 above, on, or below ground, because you can't trust Caltrans, and it appears that you can't trust MTA, where Doug Phaling went over. They're trying to push it so that it's on next week's MTA agenda rather than waiting until May. So I'd highly recommend anyone that has influence on the board to try to get 710 North Extension Tunnel postponed until May, please. Thank you.
Phil Estorati, followed by Bobby Cooper.
Good morning, councilmembers. Phil Estorati. I actually came to speak about the moratorium on rents, but I do want to mention the tragic situation with the lady who was attacked by the three very, very large dogs this morning in Hyde Park. To me, they look like band dogs, which are basically a combination of pit bull and mastiff. This was a really, really difficult situation where one of the animals was shot by LAPD. I just want to urge you not to drop any of the animal control people that we have out there in the streets, trying to keep track of this type of situation, notifying where there are dogs that are being let out, making sure that the animals are licensed and that there's someone responsible. We do not need to use the resources of LAPD to be doing animal control, and that's exactly what we'll be doing if we let off these canvassers and decrease our animal control officers. Secondly, I just want to speak about the moratorium on rents, the 3% rent increase that was allowed for this year, and ask you to consider exempting owners who have four or fewer units. In particular, agglia can speak to the larger owners, but there is absolutely no way for the small owners to continue to incur the costs, the maintenance, the cost of earthquake insurance went up 75% for me this year, and if you don't carry it and your property collapses, you have no place for tenants. Basically, the cost of water maintenance is so high that I'm urging you to please exempt the small owners. The mom and pops that are not making money are not in business, they definitely are not making a profit, and we cannot compete with these large, affordable complexes, so they're having increasing number of vacancies, and they are abandoning these properties. If they can't afford to keep them up, if the tenants damage them, they're put in reap, and then they do not collect the rents. So it's creating a very, very difficult situation, and as this issue comes up, I just wanted to know that we need to have a special voice for the small property owners who are doing their best to keep affordable housing for their tenants.
Bobby Cooper. Tony Wilkinson is following Mr. Cooper, and the clock is not working. Madam Clerk, can we fix that?
Am I to start?
All right, we're going to time you. You're still going to have two minutes. You're not going to see the clock, but we're going to tell you when you're done.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bobby Cooper, and I'm here with regards to a very serious matter. This is slander, scandal, slander and forgery, basically, and this is a document, 15 years been harassed by Rampart Police Officers, sponsored by an attorney by the name of John Gowan. Now, I have something like thousands of dollars missing. I got monies that won't be accounted for at Wells Fargo Bank, Bankoma, and Arteria Credit Room. Won't give me any information with regards to my inheritance, my money. Both my parents are dead, nobody does an investigation of any of my problems here. I've been having a problem with John Gowan some 15 years, ever since he lost his case in federal court. This is my kitchen. My wife and I are rainbow family. My son is Mexican, my wife is El Salvadorian. This is what I do. I'm a designer, cartoonist, and a chef. This was my son, right here, 10 years ago. You understand, being harassed. We were thrown out of this apartment, run out of town by Rampart Police Officers. Now, this is not the whole Rampart Police Department. This is just a few individuals being sponsored by an attorney that's trying to cover up malpractice. I'd appreciate it if you'd help me with this problem, because I intend on relocating from the city. There's too much corruption here for me, and thank you. You have a nice day.
Thank you. Tony Wilkinson. Tony Wilkinson, not in chambers. Your name has been called. Anker Patel, followed by Ms. Patel will be Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs, you'll be next, after Patel.
Now, I do appreciate you guys being here, listening to us, paying attention. I appreciate more the people that come here that don't get paid and pay attention. What I don't appreciate is the fact that when you open the roll, you tabulate the vote, you close the vote, some of you are over here or over there, and somehow it comes up as 12 ayes up there. You don't need to be near your voting apparatus when you vote. That means you don't have to pay attention to us. That means these votes are all predetermined. We are not stupid here. We pay attention. My councilman, Greg Smith, put a picture of himself in a police uniform, didn't serve a day, but he knew that would get him elected. We know it's politics. Now, I'm part of the minority. I know there are very few people who actually read the budget, and again, the issue is the budget. I go through it, page by page. Councilman Wezar has said we need scrutiny. So did Councilman Perry. We need scrutiny. We need scrutiny of the DWP's contracts, we need scrutiny of everything. We need scrutiny of everything. In the city's budget, things like buses, you spent $27 million on LA dot fleet replacement, and that's the only line. It doesn't say how many buses we have, where these buses are coming from, what kind of buses they are. That is public information. That should be in the budget. We should be, I shouldn't have to go ask somebody about how many buses did we buy with that $27 million? Anyway, there are some ordinances that I think that we could use. One is a plastic bag ordinance. California State is working on this. We could be the first major city in the United States to say plastic bags are bad. China does it. China doesn't give a damn about the environment. They don't give a damn about the environment. They're making money doing it. This is good for the environment and it makes money. We need to pass a plastic bag ordinance that charges Ralphs or whoever else, and charges the people. People are willing to pay this 5 cents, 10 cents, and the tap card, MTA, the tap card is a mess. We need to work on that.
For a point of clarification, Councilmember Greg Smith is a duly sworn member of the Los Angeles Police Department, in good standing. He's a reserve officer, as am I, and we have the right to wear the police uniform and protect the people of Los Angeles. For a point of clarification on Councilmember Greg Smith. Arnold Sachs, followed by Walter Bechtel.
Thank you. I applaud Councilman Alacan's motion for moratorium on rent increase, but I'd also like to have somebody step up and say, no more pay raises for DWP until they reach their city, the mayor's requested 20% renewable rate. How about a motion that way, that they don't get any more pay raises until the 20% goal that the mayor wants is reached? How about Councilman Zion's enthusiasm on Wednesday for the new police classes to be founded, funded? It's too bad you couldn't exhibit the same kind of enthusiasm regarding the use of the trash fees to increase the police academy, the police rolls to 10,000 officers. Too bad that enthusiasm wasn't around, otherwise we wouldn't be having this discussion about funding for police classes, because you'd have 10,000 officers, and you'd be maintaining that number with the increase on the trash fee that the mayor requested, but no lockbox there, too bad. Now, I appreciate Councilwoman Perry's motion regarding the DWP, but why didn't somebody stop? You have a DWP board that's appointed by the mayor, you have a DWP president who's ranks right up there with some low class that have, some of the lowest class that have come into the city council.
In LA this week, the LA City Council is up in arms over a proposal by the mayor to reduce certain city employees' work week to just three days as a way to help close the budget gap. Details straight ahead.
I'm Cindy San Luis at the Port of Los Angeles, where some very innovative and green...
How can you lose $6 million a week and still have a $22 million surplus? Who's running this dog and pony show? Walter Bechtel, followed by Lee Glaze.
I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to say something because one of the councilmembers, I believe it was Mr. Alacan, said something concerning about the council's concern about rent increases and asking the people out there who own private hotels and rental units and apartments, et cetera, to maintain the law under rent stabilization ordinance. I think the council needs to be aware of the fact that you need to practice what you preach. You've been using SRO, the Single Room Occupancy Housing Corporation, to bypass the RSO, the Rent Stabilization Ordinance. Every one of us at the Ford Hotel and at other places were kicked out, and all rents subsequently have been doubled. How can you say out of one corner of your mouth you want the rent stabilization ordinance to attach, and then out of the other corner of your mouth, you bypass it? Also, I want to say that there's going to be some kind of meeting with these skinheads I think Mr. Garcetti and the Catholic community and the Jewish community knows that those people, including myself, don't, those people don't like us too much. But I think what alarmed me was that yesterday on the radio, I heard a member of the, I believe it was Crips gang, get up on the radio and say, I want all you Crips and you Bloods to get out here and protest this skinhead group. Most of us who were watching the development and the evolvement of the skinheads remember that the skinheads do not discriminate against racial membership. There are black people, there are Spanish people, all kinds of people who are members of the skinheads. And my personal opinion is that when they have this meeting tomorrow, that the LAPD should be mobilized to make sure there isn't some kind of a riot that goes on. In my opinion, that is what they intend to do, coalesce their forces.
Lee Glaze, followed by Michael Hubman. Lee Glaze and Mr. Hubman will be our final public speaker. We need a remote mic. There we go, sergeant-at-arms, thank you.
Go ahead in the stand. You want to stand?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. My name is Lee Glaze. I live at 1602 Ivar Avenue, Triangle Square, the first gay and lesbian elder housing in the nation. And by the way, I adopted the little dog this morning. His name is Beauregard Aloysius Glaze. And I'm here, I'm here again as far as the disrepair, and the sidewalk. You'll have to excuse me. I just took a pain pill, an extreme pain. At any rate, last night, we were walking, Aidan and I were walking to the spotlight to have a drink. I usually am on the south side of the street. We were walking on the north side of the street. Well, right at Cosmo, had it not been for him, I would have tripped, possibly broken my hip, which I'd replaced nine times. And that has to be done. That's right, District Councilman Garcetti. And I'll be delighted to work with you people. You don't have to hire somebody to go out and assess, you know, the areas that need repairing. I'll do it for you free of charge. You know, because I did in Long Beach, and I was their worst nightmare when it came to street repair. Bob Foster, you know, just kept saying, "Okay, Lee..." But at any rate, they moved rapidly. And the city of Los Angeles has to do the same thing. You know, and you members have to realize that you have a lot of handicap constituents out there. And I have a great big mouth, and I'm going to be organizing some different handicap people and file a class action lawsuit if I have to against the city to get these things done. Because it's outrageous that they aren't done. And by the way, there was, last night, there was a police action on Hollywood Boulevard. And I don't know what the police officer paid, but I mean, this man was a true hero. And the first person that you call is a cop. So I don't know what their pay is, but it should be doubled, you know, because they are in the line of fire. That's about it.
I'll second your motion on that, Mr. Glaze. Thank you very much for the public comment. Michael Hubman, our final speaker.
Good afternoon. I think I'll start where I left off last Friday. Weeks back, I approached Councilmember Perry in the hall, and she asked, "Who are you?" Well, my name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. I'm a member of CASI, the Coalition for the Adulation of Safer Cities Initiative, whose members include Water Corps, bulk drinking water for the homeless people on Skid Row in Los Angeles, the Catholic Worker, a founding member, LAMP, the Los Angeles Men's Program, Hunger Action Los Angeles, Gary Lett, Zooma Dog, Michelle Autry, and me. Safer Cities Initiative, with the city in financial crisis, isn't it time that we get away with this expensive exercise in oppression and harassment? I am also a Democrat, a progressive, and a defender of the commons. And tomorrow, the Nazis are coming to City Hall, and I for one will be there to let everyone know that this is not what Los Angeles is all about. You'd think we'd grown up by now, but Beavis and Butthead are coming to attack the sandbox. Also, I am a member of the Arts District Healing Center, one of the oldest and arguably the most compliant medical marijuana cooperative in the city. Thank you very much, and good afternoon.
All right, that completes public comment for today. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 40, and that was called Special for Cards.
Number 40, Mr. Sacks is our only speaker on that matter. Arnold Sacks, number 40.
Yes, thank you. Dim Jim, isn't this the same Dim Jim that was authorized by Lawa to do the construction bidding or do the work at Lawa? Also, doing work for the Council of Governments, SCAG? I mean, isn't, how was this bidding done? Was there an open contract? I remember when they were allocated the contract at the airport, first they were voted against four to one, and then with a special election by, a special rehearing with Gina Marie Lindsay, her president, the vote of the people was changed to five zero. So I was wondering, was there a request for proposal for this contract for the Harbor Dim Jim? There's something sneaky about that. And let's not forget, with the airport projects behind schedule, they have to spend $90 million and they're gonna tear down the buildings. Thank you.
Very well, that matter, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Is there any staff on this item here?
Staff here on number 40, please.
Staff, staff.
There does not appear to be any staff here on number 40.
Well, I'd like to continue this item until we get staff here.
All right, let's put it on the table. We'll hold it on the desk.
Let's hold it on the desk. Thank you very much.
And if the clerk can please contact staff so they can respond to Mr. Weezer's concerns.
Amendment doesn't say how much the amendment is and other questions that we need to answer for this.
Very well, we will hold that on the desk. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item 42, and that was called Special for Cards.
Number 42, Dr. Williams, our speaker. Card, Dr. Williams, I do not see in chambers. Dr. Williams is not here. That matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Matter passes. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 56, and that was also called Special for Cards.
On 56, we have Mr. Sacks, who's filled out two cards. We'll need one, Mr. Sacks. You have two for the same item. Save a Tree.
I'll save it for next week, sir.
Very well, very well.
Thank you. Item 56 refers to the Crenshaw Corridor. So I'm just wondering, because as an example, the Mid-City Corridor extends from Hollywood Boulevard to Exposition Boulevard and all that area in between. So I was wondering if the Crenshaw Corridor, how, what the, the gap is, where that extension goes from Crenshaw Boulevard, east or west, or does that include the 110 Freeway as part of its corridor? Because if it does, that would really be interesting. Because the 110 Freeway, as you might have heard, is part of a HOV process that's being considered by the MTA. And one of the caveats of that program is that the money that's, excess funds developed by the HOV process, which is kind of an oxymoron in itself, will be allocated only for that corridor. So again, I wonder if the Crenshaw Corridor includes the 110 Freeway? Because then, funding from the HOV High Occupancy Vehicle Corridor could be used for transit projects within, on this Crenshaw Line. But we don't seem to get any answers because A, it's the MTA, and B, it's the MTA. And there's all you need to know in a nutshell.
Mr. Sacks, don't go too far away because you're gonna be speaking in a moment. Mr. Parks?
The public, the last time we checked, the HOV lanes on the Harbor Freeway run the same direction as Crenshaw, and they're several miles apart. And Crenshaw has nothing to do with the HOV lanes on the Harbor Freeway. So just want to make sure that the public knows we've not changed the maps.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Parks. On that matter, open the roll. Mr. Labonge, you have a question, sir?
As we look at this very needed improvement in the future, I hope they look to go north and northwest of San Jacinto and the West Hollywood for future extension of the Crenshaw Line after it gets completed in this very important part of Los Angeles, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 58, and that was called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sacks, 58.
Yes, thank you. And I really appreciate having that clarification. But if the councilman had been paying attention, he would have heard me say that I understand that the Mid-City Corridor runs from Hollywood to Exposition Boulevard. I was wondering about the width of the Crenshaw Boulevard. I understand that they both run in the same direction, the 110 and the Crenshaw Boulevard. I was wondering if the 110 Freeway would be considered part of the Crenshaw Boulevard. But that wasn't the question that was answered.
Well, you're on 58, and you're burning up time, and it's about there.
Regarding item 58, with the Metro wanting to consider a pay increase. This is an item from the 325 Metro Meeting, where we finalize agreements between the Pasadena Metro Blue Line Foothill Construction Authority for construction of the Gold Line from its current terminus at Sierra Madre Villa in Pasadena to Ruzza. How the hell do you expect a council, an agency to consider rent increase, fee increases when they can't get information like this correct? It's a...
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Dr. Williams on number 58. Dr. Williams is not in chambers. That matters. Before us, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 61, that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Go ahead, and we can vote on it. On that matter, number 61, there's no cards. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Very well, that passes. Next item, please.
Next item is item 68, that was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Number 68, Mr. Weezer. If there's no comment, we will open the roll. You want to speak on that, Mr. Weezer? Okay, just push that button, and I'll jump right to it.
Okay, push the button, mister.
There you go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Thank you. And I just simply wanted to take this opportunity to get the word out about a $50,000 reward we have for anyone who comes forward and works with our detectives on leading us to the arrest and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the March 29th hidden run death of Carlos Perez. This happened on March 29th, 2010, at approximately 3:00 AM, where Mr. Perez, 59 years old, was struck by a vehicle while attempting to cross Alameda Street near Hunter Street in the produce area of downtown Los Angeles. The driver fled the scene northbound Alameda Street without stopping to identify himself or herself or render aid to Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez suffered multiple blunt force injuries and was pronounced dead at the scene. Evidence recovered from the scene revealed that the hidden run vehicle was a dark colored 2005 or 2006 Infiniti G35 four-door sedan. The damage is believed to be on the right front of the vehicle. Yesterday, we had a press conference where there were a number of media outlets that helped us get the word out, but we're using every opportunity to get the words out, the word out. Mr. Perez was a family man. He was a father, a grandfather, and the outpouring of support yesterday was tremendous. We wanted to make sure that the family gets responses to their questions and that there is some resolution to this family. So anyone with information out there, if you know about this, 3:00 AM, March 29th, on the corner of Alameda and Hunter Street in downtown Los Angeles, it is believed that the car involved is an Infiniti G35. And again, I want to remind the public that if you are involved in an accident and you believe you have caused harm or damage to others, you have a responsibility to stop and render aid. Do not make things worse for yourself, as in this case, there's a grieving family that needs some answers. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other members who wish to be heard on this, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 73, that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Dennis P. Zine on item 73.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can have the folks from AT&amp;T come forward, and as they come forward, this is a resolution. I'm doing this on behalf of Mr. Smith. Regarding wireless phone use, become a part of our lives, text messages, as we have these devices, we do a lot of text messaging, growing in recent years, sending, receiving while driving significantly reduces the driver's attention. A Virginia Polytech, a study showed that texting while driving makes a car accident 23 times more likely, and a study in England showed that it's riskier than driving with influence. Recent study also showed that 26% of American teen drivers say they have text while driving, and 48% of all teens, 12 to 17, say have been a passenger while the driver was texting. And what we're talking about is keeping people safe. The Department of Transportation from the United States Government has already banned all commercial trucks and bus drivers from texting while driving. It's illegal to send electronic text messages while driving in the state of California. The city of Los Angeles hereby supports safe driving across California, and we're gonna join AT&amp;T in its efforts to educate the public about the dangers of texting while driving. This can cause a lot of issues, a lot of collisions. It only takes a second to be diverted when you're either texting or receiving a message. And we have a representative from AT&amp;T. If you please state your name and give us some information on this educational program you're gonna end up.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Zine. Danita Willoughby, Vice President of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. And the councilmembers shared some very important data points around texting and driving. And we're launching this very important public safety campaign to raise awareness about the dangers around texting and driving. And our message is quite simple. We say, "No texting while driving, it can wait." We have seen an increase of tenfold in text messaging over the last three years, and the councilmembers shared some of the statistics around, it's 23 times more likely you'll be in an accident if you text and drive. And we've seen a lot of teenagers, about 26% have admitted they have text while driving. And we want to bring attention to this and save a life if we can. So we would appreciate your support on this very important campaign, and we appreciate your time and attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
I just want to acknowledge AT&amp;T for bringing this forward, the dollars you're gonna spend on the education, and oftentimes, people don't realize, you glance down for a second, the car in front of you stops, rear-end collision, and the consequences are oftentimes severe. So thank you for the investment in keeping people safe here in the state of California. Thanks, AT&amp;T.
Thank you for the partnership.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer?
And Mr. Smith, it's a very serious public safety issue that many of us don't realize the consequences. You gave the statistics. I keep hearing about those, and they keep increasing in terms of the number of accidents that are being caused by this. And the more people are now not allowed to actually use their phone, and that is what police actually see, more people are now beginning to try to hide it and text it, and that's even more dangerous now. And also, thank you to AT&amp;T for being a great corporate, being responsible in this area, because you not only provide the service, but you're out there making sure, working with the city, that people are using your product safely. So that's, really appreciate your work on this as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
On that note, it's my understanding that the state law that was enacted in California that you can't, you have to use an earpiece if you're on the phone while driving a vehicle, also included, the law stated that you cannot text and drive either. So texting and driving is all, not only is it bad, texting and driving is very dangerous, not only for you, but other innocent people as well. But texting while driving is against the law. And I think it's important for awareness opportunities like this to remind people, not just young people, but everybody. But I want to thank all the organizations who are contributing to the studies. They're actually starting to study and actually get outcomes about how dangerous it is to text and drive. And I thought I saw one of them that said, if somebody's texting and driving, it might take them three to five times as long to actually stop the vehicle when they need to stop if they're texting and driving than if they weren't. Three to five times. That means if it takes 30 feet to stop a car, it could take as much as 100 feet to stop the car. You can imagine the kind of damage and the danger that they're putting themselves and other people in as well. So texting and driving is against the law, but aside from that, it's very dangerous and it's really not worth it. So thank you very much for helping us with this awareness.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zine, and also AT&amp;T. Public information, cooperative spirit is so important on that. And it is safety, safety, because we want everybody to go home safe today and every day. It's an avoidable accident if we follow the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. I will tweet that right away. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is President's, item number 77, and that was called Special for Cards. And there is a new ordinance that has been distributed to the councilmembers.
Okay, let's go to public hearing on that first. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. Oh, Mr. Sacks is out of time. I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks. Richard Eastman is our next speaker.
President of the Council, City Council, Los Angeles, Richard Eastman, citizen of Los Angeles since 1976, one of the founders of medical marijuana. And I'm here today because 14 years ago, we passed the Compassionate Use Act with the help of the voters of the great state of California. My dear friend, Jack Herrera, the Emperor of Hemp, died yesterday at 11:00 AM, a friend of the marijuana community, a friend of Dennis Perone and Richard Eastman. And he died because six months ago, he was giving a speech in... And he died because six months ago, he was giving a speech in Eugene, Oregon, against the taxation of marijuana. And Richard Eastman and Dennis Peron are against the Taxation of Marijuana Tax and Regulate Act on the ballot in November of two thousand and ten, and we're certainly against any taxation of marijuana by the city of Los Angeles. I sort of agree with your, uh, ordinance that we've been putting together all these years, and the fact that the city's almost near bankruptcy, and you're thinking of taxing it, but we hope you do not tax it, and you increase the fee for these dispensaries, perhaps based on the Oakland model. Poor patients such as myself don't deserve to be taxed for their illness with AIDS and cancer and glaucoma and multiple sclerosis. On Tuesday, I traveled to Denver, Colorado, to speak before fifty thousand people at the largest marijuana event in the United States, and that is where, two years ago, I helped elect President Barack Obama, who supports medical marijuana. And when I go back to Washington, D.C. sometime in the next few months to meet with Nancy Pelosi and Barbara Boxer and all the other people in Congress and the Senate and the administration that supports medical marijuana, I don't want to have to report that Los Angeles is taxing poor AIDS patients for their marijuana. So, I'm urging you to do the right thing in adopting this ordinance, take more time with the community, listen to the people such as myself that has almost died.
I can just ask you to lower your voice a little bit, thank you.
You know, this is an issue that's not going away, and I might want to say that I might run for office, and I might be running.
William Leahy is our next speaker. Thank you. William Leahy is our next speaker. After that will be Sarah Armstrong. All right, Sarah Armstrong. Okay. Jamie Green. And Dejean Cotie. Okay. I always mess it up, I'm sorry. Dejean Cotie?
Dejean Cotie, District Four. Uh, I come before you today regarding the, the fee schedule part of the ordinance, and maybe you, you need to be gently reminded that just about every single department in the city right now is experiencing furloughs, including all of those departments that are going to be responsible for overseeing the application and enforcement process of the ordinance. There are some very strict clocks that are ticking with respect to the, uh, fee schedule ordinance, and, um, I think that that needs to be considered when you are not going to have the staff power, uh, to process those applications. A hundred and eighty days for the collectives is not realistic when you do not have the, uh, staff power to actually handle that. So, thought I'd mention that for record, because I'm sure it'll be the, yet another item that will end up in the lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll close our, uh, public comments. Mr. Weezer is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, I, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian heard this item in plum. Uh, Mr. Reyes could not be here with us today. Uh, he asked that I present this item to the full council, and, uh, today, what we have before us is the final step towards regulation of medical marijuana collectives in the city of Los Angeles. This council previously voted to adopt a regulatory ordinance. While that debate was vigorous and the conclusion not unanimous, I do not believe that today's ordinance should be controversial. Uh, today's action establishes the related fee ordinance to make sure that the city will recoup the costs of processing applications and inspecting these facilities to ensure that they are wholly in compliance with our regulations. The fees outlined in this ordinance are based on the actual cost of providing services. While the council may ultimately wish to tax dispensaries, that is a future decision. What is before you today are simply fees with a clear nexus outline between the fee and the costs of city services. Plum recommended approval of this ordinance a few weeks ago. I have an amending motion, which is technical in nature, clarifying when and how a particular fee is collected. It also asks the CAO to report back annually on whether or not we are recouping the full costs of services and make recommendations on future adjustments to those fees. As you may recall, the effective date of the regulatory ordinance was tied to this fee ordinance. Once the ordinance is going to effect, we will finally be able to regulate these facilities sensibly and fairly. Uh, I've been told that these, uh, fees are pretty fair, uh, sensible, considering, uh, the fees that are, are charged to other, um, industries in the city of Los Angeles. I will now ask the city attorney to present this item to council. Thank you.
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong. Uh, I was asked to present some information about registration. Uh, I'll read it into the record. Each dispensary that does not qualify to register will be notified by letter when the mayor signs the ordinance that it must discontinue the use immediately after the effective date of the ordinance. The ordinance will go into effect thirty days after publication. Uh, this will mean that the non-qualifying dispensary must discontinue the use by the time the ordinance goes into effect. For collectives that qualify to register under the ordinance, as set forth in the ordinance, the city clerk has one week from the effective date of the ordinance to accept the notices of intent to register. To start the process, the clerk sent out the letter regarding live scan the day before the March twenty-third plum meeting. The city clerk then has thirty days to establish the priority list. Building and Safety then has six months to complete the inspection and registration process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know my time is up. If I could just finish.
You have a first week, you get six minutes if you want to go through more.
Oh, great, thank you. So, uh, colleagues, um, the anticipated approximate timeline for the ordinance is that it's gone through plum. Today, we are expected to adopt the fee ordinance and, and hopefully send forthwith. On April twenty-seventh, uh, uh, the mayor hopefully will sign around that time. May fourth, we have a publication start date, and June fourth, the fee ordinance and the previously adopted ordinance will go into effect. After that, the clerk will notice a seven-day registration window for pre-Ico dispensaries to file their intent to register, and then after that, the medical marijuana facilities will have a hundred and eighty days to work through the procedures outlined in the ordinance and come into full compliance, and it seems like December of two thousand and ten is the ultimate day when we will have full compliance in the city of Los Angeles for medical marijuana dispensaries. Uh, again, uh, colleagues, what's before us today is simply the fee schedule. I know we all have different opinions about what should be in the, uh, regulatory ordinance. Some of us agree or disagree what's in there. At the end of the day, we do need to recoup our costs of the one, of the regulatory ordinance that we adopted, and from what I've, uh, heard from our CAO, CLA, and a city attorney, they are reasonable and sensible. Thank you. I ask for your a vote.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Mr. Rosenthal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just for the record, I am against all of this. I think we should regulate and tax and get on with our lives instead of this restrictive ordinance that now has penalties associated with it, that is stupid at best, uh, and, and really not looking at the reality of the world we live in at worst. Uh, again, if you are part of this seven or eight hundred that have not gotten into this grandfathered status that we claim, what happens to you and when does it happen to you?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman, I, I don't really have that information. Perhaps staff does.
If there's anybody in staff who can answer this, this is the big question. You know, there's about nine hundred dispensaries out there, and I know that if this ordinance goes into effect, which I'm totally against, there'll be nothing left in Venice unless we fight hard for a couple of them that, that are on the bo, borderline of it. But please answer that question about the roughly eight hundred of them out there.
Matt Crawford, Office of the CAO. Uh, it's our understanding, uh, and from what the city attorney has told us, that as, once the ordinance is, uh, is made effective after the council, I assume, adopts, uh, the fees here, um, then the fees and the initial ordinance will be adopted in approximately a month. At that point, the city attorney's office will send cease and desist letters to all the, uh, all the organizations that do not qualify under the, uh, under the ICO, um, the, the original, uh, some use the word grandfathered, I'm, I don't think that's the technical term, but, uh, essentially, those that don't qualify would be issued a cease and desist letter and would have approximately a month to comply with that.
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong. I, I just want to repeat that the ordinance will go into effect thirty days after publication, and at that time, uh, the dispensaries have to cease operating.
Uh, in this, uh, fee schedule, is there any fee associated with the actual product being sold and therefore revenue stream for the city?
No.
Why?
The fees, the fees enacted and recommended here are solely to reimburse the city for the cost of processing, uh, and ensuring compliance with the city's ordinance that the council passed a few months ago.
Yeah. Well, colleagues, I'm going to vote no on all this. I think it's just totally insane and over the top, uh, but if we ever really get our act together and focus properly, um, we should regulate and tax them so we have a revenue stream to the city, leave it in the sunshine rather than pushing it into the back alleys. I obviously think the ordinance is so restrictive, it's ridiculous to begin with, uh, and it really doesn't solve any problems. Thank you.
All right, folks, that matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, we'll tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Very well.
And, Mr. President, uh, for the record, that ordinance will go over to, uh, for one week to April twenty-third.
Very well. Mr. Weezer, were your questions answered on that item when that was on the table?
No, colleague, Mr. Chair. Asked that we continue item number forty for one week, um, and let me state my reasons why. That is an amendment to a contract, um, at LAX, I believe, and it says that it's going to extend the contract with a firm for a year, uh, and they're not increasing the amount of the contract, so my question is, how can they continue performing for a year without increasing the cost to us? Uh, so I, I want to just clarify that and, and get a better sense of.
We'll continue it. Madam Clerk, please have that continued, and we'll have the, uh, matter heard next week. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer, please.
There's an excuse on the desk, Councilwoman Perry, we must be excused, may eleventh to leave at eleven fifteen for city business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
And that clears the desk.
Announcements, colleagues. Announcements on this Friday from colleagues. Mr. Labonge?
On, uh, Sunday morning at ten o'clock, uh, for the Polish community, there'll be a mass and memorial for all those who perished in that tragedy, uh, in their flight. Ten o'clock, Cathedral Lady of the Angels Memorial Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is in behalf of Ms. Perry on announcement that, uh, the, uh, one of her major developers in the, uh, her district, look, uh, SOMA, uh, developers who's headquartered at five 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 South Flower, uh, came into the community around, uh, two thousand and eight, and they, uh, made a commitment to help, uh, fundraise and become a part of the community. And so, this weekend, they're going to have their, uh, third annual SOMA Paper Yacht Challenge, which, uh, the inaugural one, uh, raised about, uh, three thousand dollars for Blind Children's Center, and two thousand and nine raised five thousand dollars for the L.A. Regional Food Bank. This year, the charity is the Wine Guard Center. So, she's inviting everyone, uh, to, uh, construct their own paper boat and participate in the race on Thursday, June seventeenth at five p.m. at the City National Plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Uh, colleagues, announcements. I have a couple announcements. I want to acknowledge Reseda Softball. They will start their season tomorrow at Reseda Park at eight a.m. We congratulate them. Also, Relay for Life at Pierce College at nine a.m. Relay for Life, that's a, a cancer run. Also, the YMCA at ten o'clock, Healthy Kids Day at the West Valley YMCA on Van Oen and Reseda. They're going to have Healthy Kids Day, the public is invited, along with a pancake breakfast. And also, Friends of Platt Library are going to have their fifteenth birthday, the, uh, Platt Library on Victory near Platt. They will celebrate fifteen years. And also, congratulations to the Greater San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce, ninety-nine years. Congratulations to the San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce under ninety-nine years. They're going to have an event on Saturday, and on Sunday, there's one event, the Red Hat Society eleventh birthday. Congratulations to the wonderful ladies in the Red Hat Society, their eleventh birthday. With that, colleagues, no other announcements. Please stand for a journey motions. Journey motions. And I will start with the, uh, journey motion for, uh, Chief Darryl Francis Gates. Here's a, a book that Chief Gates signed for me, autographed for me. Chief Gates passed away today, eighty-three years of age. Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, myself, we all worked under, uh, Darryl Francis Gates. Here's a, a photo of me as a motorcycle supervisor with Chief Gates that I proudly keep in my office. Chief Gates has passed away after a battle with cancer, loved by the members of the community, dedicated to public safety, established the Special Weapons and Tactics, uh, developed the DARE program. He was a pioneer in law enforcement, well-respected throughout the world, technology and law enforcement, and in his later years, he went into, uh, radio, went into, uh, video, development of video programs, and he'd attend many, many police events. The most recent time was the Chief McDonald, who retired, went to Long Beach P.D. At his retirement party, Chief Gates was unable to attend, but he did send a video broadcast, and you could see how he was weakening and losing weight, and sadly, at eighty-three years of age, he passed away today. Resident of Los Angeles, grew up in Los Angeles, joined United States Navy, went to SC, joined the Police Department, and did a distinguished career with the Los Angeles Police Department, attaining the rank of Chief of Police, highly respected. May he rest in peace, Chief Darryl Francis Gates. Uh, Chief Parks?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I think, uh, one of the things that, uh, uh, everyone that you talk to has a different remembrance of, uh, Chief Gates, and I think what I most appreciate about him is that having, uh, followed him as a Chief of Police, that you get a real sense of many of the battles he fought in order to keep the accountability and the responsibility of the chief's office from being diluted, and it's something that, uh, many people would not understand unless they were in that position. For those who, uh, wonder, uh, in the sense of, uh, where some of these police concepts and concerns come from, if you have an opportunity, read the book, L.A. Noor, that talks about the corruption and the, uh, of the city of L.A. and the Police Department in the thirties and forties, which then prompted Bill Parker to become famous, who then basically put in the charter, uh, that made the Police Department, uh, in the sense of isolated them from the political process and put civil service in, and all of these rationales as to, uh, how the, the Police Department is being tugged between the political process, the business community, and the criminal element in the, in the community. But, uh, having grown up, uh, uh, at the feet of, uh, of, uh, Bill Parker is rationale as to where many of his concepts came from, but he, like Ed Davis, uh, were responsible for so many of the community involvements. Uh, Ed Davis is given credit for, uh, community-based policing, neighborhood watch, basic car, while Darryl Gates is the one that implemented all that in his behalf. And so, these are the kind of issues of evolution. Darryl Gates was probably in, uh, in his early years, the only, uh, command officer in the United States that ran a intelligence division, uh, which the city of L.A. has, and he created the Terrorist Task Force around the eighty-four Olympics, and so there are many things that will live on, uh, as it's replicated throughout the, the nation, and so, um, uh, some, uh, in many instances, misunderstood, in many instances, he enjoyed creating the controversy that was, surrounded him, uh, and he used that office to really send a message of what he thought, uh, as it relates to the, uh, political and the community structure, and I think it's something that, uh, anyone that spends, I think, fifty years of his life in one city, uh, within a department, making sure that he, uh, those concepts are moving forward is something that has to be commended.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks. I did refer to you as Chief Parks because you did follow Chief Gates and that command. Uh, Mr. Rosenthal?
Uh, thank you. Uh, when they were, uh, changing the guard there, I was doing a television show, and I used to have, uh, Darryl Gates on a lot. In fact, one of the most memorial moments was I had Warren Christopher and Darryl Gates on the same show, going back and forth at the Tarzana Property Homeowners Association the next day the riots happened, uh, that, that plagued our city. And I can tell you from my interviews with him, um, he was a straight shooter. He told it like he saw it, and what I like about people is when they tell you how they feel and they're straight about it, they're not playing a game with you, manipulating you, they just tell it like it is, and the more people who tell it like it is, the better off we really are. So, he, he, he was very open, and he was very honest, and he was able to say the things that he believed made sense, and I respect that a lot. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Labonge?
Very much, having worked for John Fall for many, many years. Prior to John being on the council, he was on the Police Commission for many, many years, and John told me the story that when then-Chief Parker had a driver named Darryl Gates, Chief Parker would say, "That guy's going to be Chief of Police one day." Through the years, ironically, I was eleven years old selling newspapers on Hyperion Avenue when Darryl Gates and all the rest went to Surry Street. Avenue when Darryl Gates and all the rest went to Surry Street off of Waverly Drive for a shootout. And that's where the inception in that book that you just held up, Dennis, Chief Gates got the concept of Special Weapons and Tactics, which has been renowned throughout the world. He was from Franklin High School, which produced great elected officials, great sheriffs, and also a great Chief of Police. And as Bernard Parks said, he did engage in a lot of the dialogue here. Some people loved Darryl, a lot of people loved Darryl Gates. Some people didn't share that love. But he fought for the city. He believed in the Police Department strongly, and he believed in the separation. And it was a very trying time here when there was the last days and months between our then-mayor and then-chief on issues. But he always loved Los Angeles first, which is so important, and wanted that professionalism with the LAPD. He up until this recent illness of recent months, you would say that's the kind of body and man you want to be. He looked as good, always had that tan, and he had a wonderful life partner, Gina, who was such a supportive friend, as Dennis mentioned, at the retirement for Jimmy McDonald. On the video board was Chief Gates making his message, wishing Jim well in his new assignment. So God bless Darryl Gates for all he did for Los Angeles and his efforts to help this city.
Mr. Alakon.
Yes, Darryl Gates' middle name was Controversy. But I have to tell you that the controversy overshadowed some tremendously great work that he did as a police chief. The Neighborhood Watch programs, the Basic Car, all those things that were mentioned by Mr. Parks, could not have became models for the entire nation under his leadership. He was a character, there's no question about it. I remember when I was writing police exams for the city of Los Angeles, and I had this idea that we ought to have more community raiders on the panels. In fact, Mr. Parks was head of personnel. He knows exactly what I'm talking about. We went to the Police Commission, and Darryl Gates actually personally came down to argue against my proposal. I'm sure none of you find that surprising. But I was the general manager of personnel, let me, the lowly personnel analyst, argue against Darryl Gates. And it was really funny because as the commission was asking questions, and it sounded like they were going to lean in my direction, his expression would get wider and wider, and his arms would reach farther and farther. And I was sitting right next to him, and by the end of his presentation, I was literally ducking because he was almost striking me with every expression. We, they, the commission ended up splitting the decision and adding one raider, not the two that I wanted. But it was real indicative of his leadership. He also had a great sense of humor. And a lot of for all the controversy and all the anger that might be expressed by him or upon him, you lose sight of his tremendous sense of humor. I remember one time when we were writing the exams, and he went to speak to the community raiders, and he was telling them how important the captain position is. And he said, "You know, I can make a few mistakes and decisions at the sergeant level and the detective level because I have a lot of places to put them. But at the captain level, I cannot, I have to make sure that everyone is able to do their job because I don't have any place to put them in any pause." And he said, "Well, I do have one position that I can put them in, but that position is filled." And I think everybody knew he was talking about. Well, I don't even want to mention what he was talking about. But anyway. And so he was a very controversial figure, clearly as this city transitioned from essentially a homogeneous society to one of the most diverse places on the planet Earth in the history of humankind. He was a key figure in that transition, and it was difficult. And as diversity challenges homogeneity, quite often, it becomes controversial. I do want to share with you, when I was president of the Hispanic Employees Association, there was a time when the city was being sued by the Latinos to hire more police officers from the Hispanic community. And it was a political football. It was very controversial. And at one point, it was interesting, but Darryl Gates threw up his hands, and he said, "This is just ridiculous. From this point forward, every class will have at least thirty percent Hispanic recruits." And every class after that did, except for those that had special needs, like targeting women or targeting the Asian community. But every single class since has had at least thirty percent Hispanic representation. He just declared it, and it was so. But he was also very keen on advancing the technology of the department. I remember when Mayor Bradley and him wouldn't speak, they would send messengers. And I worked in Criminal Justice Planning Office. In fact, Mr. Parks was his spokesperson to the Mayor Bradley's office. And my office was the spokesperson on behalf of, in many ways, on behalf of Mayor Bradley. But Rosa Ochi had gone and found this incredible technology in Japan, and she said, "I got to figure out how I can get both of them to agree on this." Well, that was the Automated Fingerprint Identification System, which has become a national model, and the two of them agreed very easily on it because they recognized what a tremendous boost that would be to solving crimes in Los Angeles. I did have the opportunity to golf with him just a couple of years ago, and I don't think he knew I was that guy he was waving at. But we had a very enjoyable round of golf. And although politically we were often on different, came from different points of view, I had tremendous respect for him because I knew of the quality of things that he did in the police force that were in many ways overshadowed by all the controversy. So he did good for Los Angeles. At the end of the day, he did good for Los Angeles, and I think the challenges that he stood up to, all in all, made Los Angeles a better place.
And I will remind you that Chief Gates was here in council chambers when we were discussing Special Number Forty. He was at the center table when we discussed Special Number Forty and the intent of Special Number Forty, and went into that whole discussion, came up from Newport Beach to this council to testify as to the intent, since he was the chief when that was implemented. I have the. Thank you. What I have is the official announcement from the Los Angeles Police Department. I'll read that. Former LAPD Chief Darryl F. Gates dies at eighty-three. Darryl F. Gates died today at eighty-three years of age after a short battle with cancer. The forty-ninth Chief of Police Los Angeles Police Department passed away at his Newport Beach home with his loved ones at his bedside. LAPD Chief of Police Charlie Beck eulogized Darryl Francis Gates as one in a million human being. He inspired others to succeed, and in doing so, changed the landscape of law enforcement around the world. Born August thirtieth, nineteen twenty-six, Gates grew up in Glendale in the Highland Park area of Los Angeles. After graduating from high school, joined the United States Navy. Except for his two-year tour in the Navy, Gates was a lifelong resident of Southern California. He attended and later earned degrees from the University of Southern California. Gates joined the Los Angeles Police Department September sixteenth, nineteen forty-nine, and rose through the ranks to become the forty-ninth Chief of the Los Angeles Police Department. Gates served as chief from March nineteen seventy-eight until his retirement in nineteen ninety-two. Chief Gates accomplished great things in both good and difficult economic times, and the successes of several major programs and events in the city of Los Angeles and around the world, especially the Los Angeles nineteen eighty-four Summer Olympics, have their roots in the leadership achievements of Darryl Gates. Chief Gates is survived by his longtime companion, his brother-retired LAPD Captain Steve Gates, and his two children. And funeral arrangements are pending. Again, may Darryl Francis Gates rest in peace. Other journey motions, colleagues? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two for Jan Perry. She would like us to adjourn in memory and honor of Ophelia Esther Vanas Mendez, born nineteen twenty in Lima, Peru, passed away April two thousand and ten in Glendale. Ophelia was well-known for the international fashion designer in Peru when she arrived in L.A. in nineteen sixty-one. Together with her oldest son, Gabriel, she started what became the first typical Peruvian restaurant outside of Peru in the world. In the sixties and seventies, Inca was a well-known distinguished restaurant in L.A. and Beverly Hills. Ophelia was a champion for the poor and underprivileged. She campaigned, worked hard with the help of the offices of both Mayor Sam Miority and Tom Bradley to help others that were less fortunate. In her later years, she ventured in many different businesses, including the food vending industry in the garment district. She survived by her six children and host of grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and she will be dearly missed. Also, she'd like to have us adjourn in memory of Jeannie Carol Cross, born in nineteen sixteen, passed away January two thousand and ten. She was, Jeannie was a passionate supporter of the arts and quietly gave to others and lived life with grace, integrity, and kindness. She loved to travel, worked in her garden, employed, also enjoyed gourmet cooking. She left many fond memories for her daughter Carol, son Gregory, and her daughter-in-law, Terry, and her several grandchildren and nieces. She will be deeply missed by all family members.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. As David Ewing and known as the preacher would remember, that Anne Avery died, and Anne passed away just now, and I want to adjourn her memory. Martha Avery, who's a Venice activist and community leader, it's her mother. Anne was born in Silver Springs, Maryland, died April fifteenth of complications from pneumonia at the age of eighty-five. She was an artist and an educator and a community organizer. Originally from Indiana, Miss Avery worked as a freelance photographer in Washington, D.C., before moving in the sixties with her husband Alan to the predominantly African-American community in Sandy Springs, Maryland. There, she began volunteering at the Ross Booty Community Center, a formerly segregated elementary school, where she built a darkroom and started a photography program. Over the years, she created several more programs at the center, including weaving, ceramics, and baking. After she realized that her home was the only one in the neighborhood with indoor plumbing, she turned to community organizing, working with the African-American activists in Sandy Springs to help improve some of the deplorable living conditions that many of the community faced. In the seventies, Miss Avery and her husband Alan founded a summer camp of underprivileged youth in Long Beach, North Carolina. From nineteen ninety to two thousand and four, Miss Avery produced, directed, and edited artstrokes for Montgomery County Public Television. Miss Avery produced over two hundred and thirty half-hour programs, featuring both local and nationally renowned artists, working in all media. Artstrokes won several national awards. In two thousand and eight, despite suffering from advanced effocemia, Mrs. Avery took up campaigning once again, this time for Barack Obama. Between August two thousand and eight, November fourth, two thousand and eight, Mrs. Avery made thousands of phone calls into Northern Virginia, helped to identify potential voters and get out the vote on election day. Her work was celebrated in the Huffington Post, survived by her husband of fifty-one years, Alan Avery of Silver Springs, Maryland, and daughter, Mother Avery of Venice, California, and son-in-law, Warren Bowman of Venice. May she rest in peace.
Mr. LeBonge.
Mr. President, can we have all members for Darryl Francis Gates?
Absolutely, all members on Chief Gates. And the second one, all members in the second for Mr. Rosenthal. Oh, sorry, a second journey motion, Mr. Rosenthal, I'm sorry.
Jack Harrow, born on June eighteenth, nineteen thirty-nine. The cannabis folks mentioned him to me, and they asked, "Could we adjourn in his memory?" He just passed away. He was a cannabis activist and author of The Emperor Wears No Clothes. He devoted his life to the support of cannabis hemp and marijuana. A former Goldwater Republican, Harrow was a pro-cannabis activist. He wrote another book as well called Grass. He believed that the cannabis savata plant should be decriminalized because it has shown to be a renewable source of fuel, food, and medicine, and could be grown in virtually any part of the world, and that the U.S. government deliberately hid the proof of this. A specific strain was named after him and gotten a lot of awards. He ran for President of the United States twice in nineteen eighty-eight, and also he ran again in nineteen ninety-two as a grassroots party candidate. In July two thousand, he suffered a minor heart attack and a major stroke, resulting in difficulty speaking and moving the right side of his body. On September eleventh, two thousand and nine, Harrow suffered another heart attack while backstage at the Hemp Stock Festival in Portland, Oregon. He spent nearly a month in critical condition in a Portland hospital, including several days in a medically induced coma. He died yesterday in Eugene, Oregon, from complications related to the September two thousand and nine heart attack. He was seventy years old. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. No other journey motions. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.